Everyone, I'm going to call to order the meeting of the San Jose City Council for the afternoon of April 18th. Tony, would you please call the roll?
Jimenez.
Present.
Torres. Cohen.
Here.
Ortiz. Davis.
Here.
Doan. Candelas.
Here.
Foley.
Here.
Batra.
Here.
Kamay.
Here.
Mahan.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. If you're able, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. All right. Today's invocation will be from Piedmont Hills High -- I'm sorry, Piedmont Hills High School Interact Club, and Councilmember Cohen will tell us more.
Great. Well, I'm happy to welcome students from Piedmont Hills High School here today to lead our invocation. The Interact Club stands for International Action and is the high school branch of Rotary International, one of the largest nonprofit service organizations in the world. Interact at Piedmont Hills High School has been a major community service club for decades and remains one of the largest clubs on Piedmont Hills campus. Students in Interact strive to enact change in our local community through community service and influence international change through fundraising for international causes. I've invited them the week of Earth Day, which is this Saturday. They are here to talk about how they're working to help our planet with their current international project called the Ripple Effect, and I guess I'll let them share more about that with us. So let's welcome co-president Eden Lee, co-publicist Viana Nguyen, Treasurer Van Trong, and co-Youth Act Coordinator Christina Huffman. Come on down.
Thank you for the introduction. Hello, everybody. We belong to the Piedmont Hills Interact Club of District 5170. Interact is a service club within many Bay Area high schools that strive to empower youth leaders and bring change to the community. We bring forward change by designated international and community projects every single year that raises -- in which every Interact Club raises money and awareness through fundraisers. And our biggest fundraiser yet was Fall Leadership Conference, where a thousand interactors together garnered together to learn about how to be a leader and what we're working towards. This year, our international project is the Ripple Effect, which focuses on bringing lasting clean water infrastructure to Honduras. Our community project is called Cultivating Communities, which focuses on food security in the Bay Area. This Saturday is Earth Day, which celebrates Earth and seeks awareness for the environmental protection. So we want to invite you to learn a little bit more about our project, the Ripple Effect. As Americans, we take water for granted, and as Californians, we may care a little bit more since we're always in a drought.
It might seem like it's everywhere, but clean drinkable water is actually a very finite resource. In fact, less than 1% of the Earth's water is able to be used by humans because most of it is saltwater or too difficult to access. To reiterate, it's an essential resource, especially when it comes to meeting the needs of individuals and society. Clean drinking water is a human right and the basis of a healthy life. Access to clean water is the foundation for the systems of sanitation and hygiene that prevent countless diseases around the world. But what happens when people lack access to nearby clean drinking water? This is the situation that 2.2 billion people worldwide face. According to a study by the 2019 World Health Organization, nearly one out of three people worldwide face struggles when trying to find clean drinking water sources. Even more people lack basic water for hygiene and sanitation, which has a huge impact on the food supply. About 10% of the world's population consumes food that has been irrigated by water that is polluted by waste. All of this results in preventable sickness and death, especially in areas of the globe already caught in cycles of poverty and underdevelopment.
So this year, Interact 5170 is partnering with Water First, a global nonprofit organization committed to true equity in water access. We strive to enable the people of Honduras to implement and sustain community-managed integrating clean water supplies, toilets, and hygiene education. By supporting Water First's Honduras initiative, we will enable communities to invest local labor to dig miles of pipelines. This infrastructure will dramatically improve hygiene conditions and households will flourish as women and young children can pursue education instead of spending hours collecting water. So you may wonder how local high schools fit into this pursuit for immense change in the environment. For Piedmont Hills Interact, we do our part through community service events that range from cleaning up at a park to raising funds through various events. This year, we have been able to raise $1,500, which will be donated to our projects. However, we are just one of many clubs in the area that band together to maximize our impact. Together, we take on these international challenges to serve the community.
Collectively, Interact's goal is to raise $30,000 for our projects. If you would like to invest in our planet and support our mission for safer water, you can learn more at donate-interact5170.org. Every dollar, every subsequent drop creates a bigger and bigger ripple of change. We're doing our part to bring forth more water, but we would also like you to be part of saving the water. This Earth Day, we would like everyone here to be more considerate of their water usage for those who don't have the same privilege as we do. Thank you for inviting us to celebrate Earth Day with the San Jose City Council.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Cohen, and thank you to the Piedmont Hills Interact Club for your community service and for helping us kick off today's meeting. We're going to move on to ceremonial items. Councilmember Candela, if you'll join me at the podium, we will recognize Los Mestizos de San Jose.
Okay. Today, we are honoring Los Mestizos de San Jose, a folklorico dance group on their 50 years of cultural impact in the city of San Jose. Los Mestizos de San Jose is a folklorico dance group that was founded in the summer of 1973 by five families: Castro, Gutierrez, Rocha, Rodriguez, and Carrasco in East San Jose. This group is currently directed by Hector Gonzalez. Los Mestizos has made significant contributions to our community by providing a unique and culturally rich experience for audiences of all ages. The dance group has provided countless opportunities for local students to travel to international conventions to further both their artistic and cultural education. Student learners or student leaders return and share the knowledge and experience they gained. These opportunities encourage personal growth while also providing a pathway for dancers to become local leaders. The leadership attributes students learn during their time with Los Mestizos are evident in a wide range of success dancers have had in their educational professional careers. Los Mestizos de San Jose has brought the beauty and tradition of Mexican folklorico dance to audiences throughout our city, state, and beyond. Some of our biggest stages have been shared with Mariachi Vargas de Tectitlan, and my personal favorite, Los Tigres del Norte, who are from right here in San Jose. In recognition of their 50th anniversary, we would like to honor you with this commendation acknowledging your achievements and contributions to the San Jose community. Thank you for your continued support of our artistic community and for your commitment to recognizing and caring our culture and tradition. Hector, would you like to say a few words?
I'd like to thank the mayor, council members, and the city of San Jose for recognizing Los Mestizos de San Jose on our celebration of 50 years. I'd also like to thank all the parents, past parents, dancers, past teachers that have helped keep Los Mestizos afloat for the past 50 years. Special thank you to the families that you had mentioned that had a vision in 1973 to keep the Mexican tradition alive through dancing. So it's a very special honor. And this year, we will be having a big celebration, big show, and I'd like to welcome all of you on a future invitation. Save the date, and thank you once again.
All right. Councilmember Foley, please join me at the podium, and we will recognize and proclaim Distracted Driver's Awareness Month.
Thank you, Mayor. Today, I proclaim Distracted Driver Awareness Month. It's time to put down your cell phones while driving. And actually, you can put them down right now so you could pay attention to what I have to say because it's really important. As the Chair of the Vision Zero Task Force, making our streets safer is a top priority for me. Everyone deserves to feel safe on our streets whether they walk, bike, roll, or drive. 3,000 Americans are killed in distracted driving crashes each year, and drivers who use handheld devices are four times more likely to get into severe crashes. As a reminder, you can use your phone's driving mode to mute calls and notifications while you're driving. And don't forget about texting. If you must text, please pull over and do so at the side of the road. You know, when you text, you look down for seconds, and then in those couple of seconds, you can take someone's life, and that's going to change your life, and it's going to change their life forever. So please, put down your cell phones. Don't drive distracted. And if my brother was listening to this, Paul Feller, do not text while you're driving. I'll have to make sure he YouTube's this later on. But not while driving, yeah. Even using your hands free to make a phone call while driving is a source of distraction. There are three types of distraction: visual, manual, and cognitive. Use of cell phones and other devices create all three types of distractions. While hands-free devices may eliminate manual and visual distraction, they do not reduce cognitive distraction. In fact, a 2012 white paper from the National Safety Council found that hands-free phones offer no safety benefit while driving, and drivers talking on cell phones make more mistakes than drivers talking to passengers. It's important to point out that speeding is still the number-one cause of fatal and severe crashes in San Jose. So even if you aren't driving distracted, you're not driving safely if you're exceeding the speed limit. So please watch the speed limit when you're driving, too. Coupled with dangerous behavior like speeding, the dangers of distracted driving become more amplified for those within and outside the vehicle. Many think that speeding and distracted driving is a problem for the other guy. Nothing could be further from the truth. We all share responsibility to keep our roadways safe by paying attention when driving and slowing down. While drivers have a responsibility in modifying their driving behavior, the city of San Jose must do more to improve safety on our streets so that when drivers inevitably drive unsafely, it doesn't have to result in a serious injury or fatality. To accept this proclamation is Anthony Montez from the Silicon Valley Bicycle Coalition. The Silicon Valley Bicycle Coalition brings cyclists together from across the region to advocate for bike lanes as an example. In addition, they're tireless advocates for street safety, Vision Zero, safety on our streets for everyone, not just cyclists. My office has been very happy to collaborate with the Bicycle Coalition, and we look forward to working with you more. With that, Mayor Mahan, please present this proclamation to Silicon Valley Bike Coalition, who will say a few words.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Council. My name is Anthony Montez from the Silicon Valley Bicycle Coalition. If you don't know who we are, we're a nonprofit focused on creating healthier, more just communities by making bicycling safe and accessible for everyone. I also like to take an opportunity to thank Councilmember Foley for being our Vision Zero Task Force Chair and being a tireless advocate for the elimination of traffic deaths. I'm accepting this on behalf of advocates in San Jose. We have a San Jose local team that have been running a Vision Zero campaign over the last several months, and we're asking council to prioritize those Vision Zero projects, push up those timelines for those projects, and make sure that our Department of Transportation, which is full of world-class talent, world-class talent, that they have all the resources and the staff they need to meet the needs and the vision that we set out in our active transportation plan. But until then, until we can create facilities and roads that are welcoming and safe for everyone, it's going to take an entire village to make sure that we keep each other safe. These are public roads that we're putting our private vehicles on. And I don't know about you, but maneuvering a 2,000-to-5,000-pound vehicle is plenty of stimulation for me. I don't necessarily need to be on the YouTube or texting or posting. So what we ask of you is just to pay attention, because you can be the most attentive, best driver 99.9% of the time, and all it takes is a few seconds to change your life and to change the life of someone else and their families who have to pick up the pieces afterwards. So I appreciate it so much. Thank you so much. April is Distracted Driver's Awareness Month. Be alert out there. Next month is also Bike Month. You're going to see an abundance of cyclists out and about soaking in the sun and having a good time. Please accommodate them, and please make them feel welcome on our roads. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you again to all of our guests who were recognized today. We're on to orders of the day. Does anyone on the council have any changes to the printed agenda? Okay. Today's adjournment was brought forward by Councilwoman Jimenez, who would like to adjourn today's meeting in memory of Anne Marie Catamopolis, a District 2 resident who devoted 32 years of her life to her students at Abraham Lincoln High School, teaching choir and directing productions as the school's vocal director before passing away on March 29th, 2023. Councilwoman Jimenez?
Thank you, Mayor. Anne Marie Catamopolis, or Ms. Kay, as she was lovingly called by the many students whose lives she touched, was an award-winning music and choir teacher. She passed away after a short illness on March 29, 2023. She was 57 years old and a longtime San Jose District 2 resident. Ms. Kay attended Branham High School. After that, she went on to get a BA in music performance and an MA in choral conducting at San Jose State University. For the last 32 years, she has been devoted to her students at Abraham Lincoln High School, where she taught and conducted all the choir classes offered. Ms. Kay served as a vocal director for all of Lincoln musicals, theater productions. During her time at Lincoln, she led an award-winning choir which sung all over the country and internationally. Ms. Kay's legacy runs deep. She was an amazing educator with high expectations and dedication. She was a hard worker and a no-nonsense teacher. Yet, at the same time, she was laughter and silliness. She was loved and a safe harbor for so many. She believed deeply in equity and never hesitated to speak up for those who had not yet found their voice. She is already deeply, deeply missed by all who knew her. Her absence reminds us of the fragility of life, but it also reminds us of the need to choose kindness, to build bridges, and to appreciate the small things. It reminds us to love without limits and to put others before self. It reminds us that we are connected. Her gifts to the Lincoln community were immeasurable or are immeasurable and span decades. There are so many ways that Ms. Kay's spirit is ever-present, and even in the face of her absence, her legacy goes on. For those that knew her, if you find yourself longing for Ms. Kay, look no further than the reluctant students of a beginning choir class, the ones who question if they have the strength to actually open their mouths and sing. It is there that she will always be perched on the shoulders of those students, whispering in their ears with enthusiasm, "You are enough." And I think there's some folks here that knew her that are likely present and certainly online, so thank you.
Thank you for sharing Ms. Kay's story with us, Councilmember. Appreciate that. Do we have any public comment on the orders of the day?
Blair Beekman?
Hi, Blair Beekman here. Nice to hear the words about the adjournment and who the meeting is dedicated to today. Thank you.
Back to council.
Thank you. Okay, we're on to the closed session report.
Thank you, Mayor. We do not have a report out of closed session today.
Thank you, Nora. Next is the consent calendar. Are there any items that the council would like to pull from consent today? We have a motion?
So moved.
Great. Public comment?
Paul, followed by Blair.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Paul Soto from the Horseshoe. The city of San Jose has declared war on democracy. You guys went back and you got all the minute orders that had public comments during the COVID era. Then what you did is you rewrote them, exactly what they talked about in 1984, George Orwell's 1984, in The Ministry of Truth. What you guys did is you went back and you got all of the public comments, all of those thousands of hours that I have spent and other members of the community have spent researching and infusing the democratic process with our positions. And what you did is you irrigated to yourself the privilege of erasing that from public documents, and then you lied to the public because you didn't say anything about that. That is a crime. These are crimes that this city council is committing against the citizenry because you were erasing the public comments from public documents. And then you're sitting there with a straight face, and then you're lying about it. And you're telling me that this is a democratic process. You're going to have to be taken to court, and that's exactly what's going to be done. I'm going to make sure that this city and everything that I have ever said in these meetings is a part of the public record so that the future will know exactly what happened here during COVID and exactly what has happened here. You have no right to erase from public documents public comment.
Blair?
Hi, Blair Beekman here. Happy meeting for today. To comment on Paul's words on the previous item, I thought you were working on a plan to reintroduce the meeting minutes with an inclusion of the public comment again. And I know it's an issue you've done well in the past. It's just a matter of taking the time and effort to replace the public comment back into the minute process again and get this squared away. Good luck in working on that. I'd be glad to help out with that process. To speak about other items, about accountability in our public process, item 2.7, thank you very much that you are working on the local emergency, continuing the proclamation of a local emergency by 60 days. It's my hope that, I don't know if it's quite possible, but can the proclamation of a local emergency, can that be used specifically for individual practices within a city government and community process? For instance, for the public meeting process, can it be used specifically for that in the future to help with the Zoom issues, to ensure that Zoom can continue and to be a public process? There are emergency issues involved, and it's difficult for people to get to meetings sometimes. At the county level, that's the kind of things that I hope this can help address. Real good luck in those efforts in working with the state to figure out such legal questions. And on a federal level, it's my understanding with the SJPOA stuff that there's a lot of federal agencies involved possibly in how this was initially investigated. The same federal agency work is going on, I think, in the Antioch area, and they're having the same issues of taking down police discrimination issues going on there. Good luck. They're doing good community work in Antioch, a whole community process. Good luck how we can do that here in San Jose as well. Thank you.
Paul?
Hello, Paul Lineham from University of California, Lick Observatory. I welcome the Distracted Driver Awareness Month declaration, but I'm a bit dismayed that it comes too late. Many of the council members and the previous council voted in favor of some of the greatest distractions to drivers in the form of electronic billboards. So I'm glad that people have come to their senses and realize the dangers posed by distracted driving. But I hate to say we told you so, but these studies were all cited during debates since 2018, so it looks like the council is moving in the right direction, and I commend them for that. Thank you very much.
Back to council.
Thank you, Tony. All right. I don't see any hands for my colleagues. Let's vote on the consent calendar.
Okay, we're voting electronically?
Tony, we have the wrong title. I assume you can still count it?
Yes. I'm waiting on Batra. Passes unanimously?
Great. Thank you. Okay, we're on to item 3.1, Report of the City Manager.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, everyone. Wanted to let everybody know that this Saturday, April 22nd, marks the 53rd annual celebration of Earth Day. San Jose is committed to environmental protection and stewardship in the work we do every day throughout many city departments and programs and partnerships with local organizations. One of our city programs, Beautify San Jose, or Beautify SJ, as we often call it, is an initiative to clean up and restore our San Jose community by supporting residents' efforts at reclaiming their public spaces and empowering residents to demonstrate their pride in our city. Led by the Department of Parks, Recreation, and Neighborhood Services, Beautify SJ works to prevent and clean up illegal dumping of graffiti, manage encampments, provide grants for community beautification projects, and organize neighborhood litter cleanups. To honor Earth Day this Saturday, Beautify SJ will lead the city's participation in the Great American Litter Pickup, an annual nationwide event. In collaboration with local nonprofit partners, mayor and city council offices, and neighborhood associations, staff will work with volunteers at more than 40 sites throughout San Jose to pick up litter and beautify our communities. A list of cleanup sites and link to register is displayed on the screen now. I hope it's coming. Is it? It's got it? Okay, great. I encourage everyone to find a site and join city staff, the mayor and city council members, and fellow San Jose residents to celebrate Earth Day and help with the cleanup effort this Saturday. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Jennifer. Looking forward to seeing many of you out there for the Great American Litter Pickup. It's a great event every year, fun to connect with neighbors across the city as we clean up our city. And speaking of which, we're on to item 3.3, one of my favorite topics, the proposal for graffiti abatement services. I understand that we do not have a staff presentation, so I will just make a quick note before going to public comment. Councilmembers Torres, Ortiz, Dwan, and Candela, and I submitted a group memo. There is just one note I want to make on the first recommendation, which is that we have since learned that because the bid did not include any consideration of having the pay be performance-based, we will not be, we will need to drop that specific recommendation. We do hope that in the future, staff considers running procurement processes with vendors like this that enable us to have an SLA with rewards for overperforming and maybe discounts if there's underperformance, that kind of concept. So we can certainly discuss that when we come back. But I just wanted to flag that we'll be requesting that we drop Rec 1. But I just wanted to flag that we'll be requesting that we drop rec. 1. Okay, with that, do we have any public comment?
Paul Soto? Okay, moving on to Blair.
Hi, Blair Beekman here. Graffiti is an interesting concept in a city and on both ends of the spectrum. Good luck on how to address this issue, the balance in addressing this issue, and thanks for your time.
Paul Soto?
Yes, Paul. Sort of on the horseshoe, thank you for doubling back. Graffiti, why don't we get down to what, why are kids on the walls rather than monetizing what nonprofits are gonna get paid out and cash out and to deal with the issue? I mean, I think, I think we need to discuss, along with the graffiti abatement, what's going on in these barrios and why are these kids tagging on walls? One of the reasons why they're tagging on walls, it is the poor person's way, the people that are experiencing the impoverishment, it is their way of expressing themselves and taking ownership of space. That's what the graffiti is about. It's about when you start gentrifying these areas and they start seeing that they don't have no ownership of anything, absolutely nothing, and you made certain of that. One of the ways that, one of the ways that the people in the barrios assert their sense of belonging to a space is graffiti. Once you start dealing with those issues, then you're gonna stop cashing out these nonprofits that are profiting from this. They profit from graffiti. Why? Because they tell the city that they want programs inside their nonprofit to deal with that. So what they're doing is they're profiting from the poverty. That's a poverty pimp. That's what they are. They are poverty pimps, pimping the poverty that's inside our barrios to make deals with the city and get political and economic power. Thank you.
Back to council.
Thank you. Councilor Candace?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. I wanted to quickly touch base on this item. You know, we collaborated on the memorandum along with, our colleagues weren't here, but, but I guess the reason I think it's important, when I worked in the California State Legislature under then-state Senator Bell, I led a working group that dealt with the issue on graffiti abatement services, and GPC was the contractor, GPS was the contractor who Caltrans has, which staff is well aware. So I guess my question would be, instead of directing staff to negotiate and execute a contract, would modifying the memorandum to incentivize, to incentivize or explore future incentives, like the mayor mentioned, would that, would that be an amenable fix to that, to the contract language, to make it, to make it feasible?
Thank you for the question. Rick Bruno, Director of Finance. What staff was recommending is that we shift any research and review of SLAs and incentives and remedies for not meeting performance metrics into studying that as part of recommendation number four, to look at incentives as well as penalties or remedies for not meeting performance targets. That would come back, that would be a study and be something that we can look into to include in a future procurement action for these services.
Okay, okay, so you'd be coming back to us with the, with the result of that, just to clarify? Or to figuring out how we can do that in future contracts? Because I guess what the point of trying to, trying to do with this type of contracts is basically give our contractor an incentive to, you know, meet or exceed while potentially saving the city and taxpayers money.
Thank you, council member. John Sisrali, Director of Parks, Recreation, and Neighborhood Services. We agree with the concept, we think it's great. The real problem was it wasn't in the actual official request or proposal, so we'd be adding something that might have otherwise attracted other people to bid. So it's not a fair process if we do it now. If you look at number four and you see item E on the end, approaches that incentivize vendors to meet or exceed SLAs, we think that that falls neatly into that section where we're gonna study all those things in four and come back to you and say, here's what we learned, what other people are doing, including ways to incentivize and/or discount vendors that we find other people are doing, or ideas we might come up with ourselves.
Okay, fantastic, then, then yes, I will move our memorandum, Mayor, with the dropping of recommendation one.
Second.
Perfect, thank you. Councilor Batra?
When I was here in 2017, city had run a unleash your geek competition, and two residents of San Jose, Candace Marbury and Christopher Farmer, they had won the competition, and that competition was having drones do the graffiti removal. I don't know if that company or a company was formed to take care of that because they were the innovators. I would like to see if there's such a company in existence and in future, if you can help them become a good business, or at least evaluate them if they're a good business, to bring robots and drone into graffiti removal to make it more efficient and probably lower cost. Okay? So I don't have any updates for you in terms of asking you to do anything different. I'm just giving you this as a, something which I'm personally familiar with. Mayor Sam Liccardo gave the award to this couple for this innovation, and if such a thing exists, I think we'd like to promote that kind of innovation in the city.
Thank you, council member. And I'll have Olympia Williams, our Division Manager, speak to that real quickly. She was involved with that back when it happened. I remember it from TV, but I actually wasn't in PRNS at that point, but I thought it was pretty neat. So I'm glad you bring it up. But Olympia, can you tell us where that went?
Yes, so it was an innovation project to see if we can have a drone help us paint out the bridges on the freeway systems. As you can imagine, those are complex and complicated for us to address the graffiti on an ongoing basis. We did have two people that won the drone competition. They did not form a company, but it's something that a lot of large cities across America do discuss, is looking at how we can use drones or other forms of technology to help us abate graffiti, and it's something that we'll definitely put on our list to keep looking for. Thank you.
Thank you. And the robots for the wall graffiti, okay? All right. Thank you very much for looking into that.
Thanks, council member. And I think would staff agree that that's captured in the spirit of rec. 4 as well, looking at innovative approaches to abating graffiti? Excellent. Okay, Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to mention that I also would like to see performance incentives, not just for this, but there are probably other opportunities as we're putting together RFPs that more broadly makes sense to include performance incentives. So I just wanted to, to agree with that as well as put it out there that as we're doing RFPs for many different things, that we start thinking about what might be possible as incentives.
Thank you for that. That is something that I've started to have conversations with our purchasing division on, especially as it relates to services, service contracts, where we know that there's an interest in city council and our community to see results and to be able to measure those results. So that's something that we've discussed and we're gonna continue to follow up on as we develop the RFP with departments, ensuring that there's some consideration for service level agreements as well as metrics and targets that we can aim for.
Awesome, thanks, Vice Mayor. Completely agree. I will say, just before we vote, that graffiti protective coatings, GPC, has been a great partner over the last decade plus, and in fact, when you talk about SLAs, one of the things I was impressed to see is that they do meet, they have met their 72-hour response time target or SLA service level agreement over 80% of the time, which is good. Now, obviously, we'd love to incentivize them to get to 85, 90%, and I think to various points made up here, we should be thinking about standard services that way with incentives in either direction, save us money if they're underperforming, for example. But I do think they've, they've been a great partner. Looking forward to also following up on the other recs in the group memo around better partnering with and even beginning to kind of evaluate and score the performance of partner agencies, and looking at creative solutions that other cities have embraced that we can learn from. So appreciate the staff's work on this and the collaboration of my colleagues who co-authored the group memo. With that, I think we're ready to vote. Tony?
I was trying to get out of my screen. My apologies.
Sorry.
You did it too quick.
I looked at the wrong, the wrong monitor. The votes unanimous.
Great, thank you. We're onto item 5.1, report on bids and award of a construction contract for local street resurfacing. No presentation.
Move approval.
Second.
Great. Do we have public comment?
No hands are up.
Let's vote. I'm sorry, it sounds like there may have been...
I have cards for 5.2. I don't have a card for, I do have one that wasn't labeled for street sweeping, but this wasn't a street sweeping item. It was resurfacing, so I had put the street sweeping one as open forum, but if this is the item he wanted, he can come down.
So did you want to speak on 5.1?
Okay.
5.2, okay. Well, great. That's where we are now. Okay, so 5.1 passes, 5.2, this is the predevelopment agreement for the Airport Connector. We do have a staff presentation, and then we'll go to public comment.
Thank you, Mayor. John Rizzo, Director of Transportation, with me, joining me up here, it says John Aiken, Director of Aviation, Ramzes Madu, and Brian Stanki of my staff. And before we get into the presentation that we have for council and mayor, I just want to summarize that we're excited to actually reaching this stage, to move into an exploratory stage with our private sector partners to look at innovative new way of connecting San Jose International Airport with downtown and Duran Station. And before we get started, I also just want to thank and acknowledge former Mayor Liccardo and former Vice Mayor Jones for really being early advocates, for taking a look at an innovative way to make that kind of connection that we're bringing to council today. So I really want to thank them for early leadership and advocacy on this. I'll turn it over to the team.
All right, good afternoon, council and mayor. Ramzes Madu, Division Manager, Planning Policy and Sustainability. Just gonna say a couple of words. Brian's gonna take on the presentation. San Jose has set some really ambitious goals, becoming a zero-carbon city, reducing deaths and severe injuries to zero, addressing historical inequities, and propelling significant new development. Transportation plays a major part in accomplishing all of these things. Transportation accounts for 50% of emissions or more, is a linchpin to enabling development, and is a key component in creating an equitable city. But our current system is not yet up to the challenge. Most people cannot meaningfully live outside of their single occupancy vehicles. They cannot live using transit and non-auto mode modes. And in certain areas of the city, congestion is snarling and will snarl even more our roads, which neither electric vehicles nor autonomous vehicles will help. Last year, the council adopted Move San Jose, as well as the Transit First policy. Move San Jose elevated transit as one of the three key areas in which the city will advance transportation projects and policy. Highlighted among those strategies to meet that overall goal is one, improving current transit, right? And that, we pass the Transit First policy, which DOT is diligently implementing, and we're trying to do everything we can to expedite bus travel and light rail. But another piece is new transit. That's why we're here. For us to succeed as a city, we need a great deal more new transit, and the current ways of developing and financing transit takes too long and is too expensive to scale and meet our goals. That is why we have come up with a new type of project and are looking into a new type of transit technology that may be able to help us meet those goals. With that, I'll pass it over to Brian.
Thank you, Ramses. Good afternoon, council, mayor. My name is Brian Stanki. I'm project manager for the Duran Airport project, and I'll be discussing the next step in that, which is the predevelopment agreement for business case and feasibility San Jose hosts two important regional transportation hubs, the San Jose Medellin International Airport and San Jose Duran Station, air and rail hubs respectively. And this project would connect Duran to Terminal B of the airport with an option to extend that further through Terminal A and the parking, long-range parking. And we're looking at a technology that could not only be used for this project, but as Ramses said, you know, extend it on for other corridors that need transit in San Jose. Normally, these sort of projects are led by either VTA or regional transit agency. The city and VTA working together have decided the city should be, take the lead in this project. VTA is very focused right now on the art Phase 2 Eastridge Right Rail and other capital and operating projects for their existing system. And, you know, the city is looking to find that innovative project delivery and technology solutions that Ramses was talking about. We also actually are a better partner for going out to the market. You know, the airport is part of the city, as are the city streets, the construction permitting, and the long-term operating franchise for the operator would all be things that need to be worked out with the city. So if it was a transit agency, they'd have to come to the city anyway. We're really pushing this project not only for the mode shift, but, you know, what's happening with the airport, you know, rebounding from COVID. They're looking at their long-term expansion plans, potentially new terminals, Duran Integrated Station, they're looking at rebuilding and expanding the station, and the amount of development in the Duran area. If we're moving forward, we can design with and integrate with all of those. If not, we're gonna have very limited land availability and trying to work our way around those. The recommendation that staff is bringing is to sign Phase 1 of a multi-phase predevelopment agreement with a team led by Plenary. This is only for the initial feasibility studies on the project, looking at validating their proposed transit solution in business case. It's about six to 12 months worth of work, and the overall cost to the city would be less than $1 million and covered by existing appropriations for the project. This is consistent with previous council direction on the Duran Airport Connector. In 2019, council directed us to find out more information about emerging technologies, alignments, delivery methods. We issued an RFI, a request for information, and got over 20 responses to that, brought those back to council in 2020, and were directed to move the project forward either using the standard publicly developed delivery method or through a public-private partnership. Last year, we brought, and to council, when council adopted a ordinance specifically for the Duran Airport Connector project, allowing us to use the public-private delivery And just want to emphasize what Ramses was saying about, about cost. You know, this project was originally in VTA Measure A in 2000. One of the big reasons it hasn't moved forward yet is the ever escalating cost of new transit builds. Automated people movers, we've looked at the projects under construction today, are now over half a billion dollars per mile. And then whether it's the automated people mover or lower capital cost systems, they have ongoing operating and operating costs that are much higher than the capital cost over time. We went out to the market asking for a project that was a significant, a fraction of what the automated people mover standard technology would cost. And as importantly, we're asking the private partner to take on all the operating and maintenance costs of the project. So they collect the fair revenue, they pay operating and maintenance. And we didn't say you must use this technology or that technology, but the technologies they brought in their proposals are based on that much lower capital cost and then being able to cover the operations and maintenance based on the fair revenue. The way we set up the public-private partnership is a multi, at-risk, multi-phase predevelopment agreement. It's predevelopment agreement because we don't bring them at the end for design and construction, like design... design and construction, like design-build, but we bring them at the very beginning. So they're through the planning, design, environmental, construction, operations. And they're investing in the early project at risk. So the public-private partnership, we're really looking to get the know-how and technology from the market, in the procurement to find the right partner. And ultimately, it's about minimizing the amount of public investment needed so that we can move these projects forward faster rather than later. As I mentioned, this is a multi-step PDA, so we're coming to council in the box in the far left for a decision on Phase One. But this is just the first of multiple times we'll come to the council. As we finish each phase of the PDA and further develop the project, learn more about what the costs are, what the ridership, what the environmental implications are. We're going to come back at the end of each phase to get direction whether to move forward into the next step. We took our cost targets, our proposed business model, out to the market in the last two years to do a significant amount of market outreach to contractors, technology providers, infrastructure investment firms. In May, we put out the, last year, put out the RFP, got bids from three different companies, took them through a multi-step evaluation process. One of the companies, the Boring Company, which builds the Vegas Loop system, didn't make it through the responsiveness review. We're really looking to have a joint venture with these companies. So part of what we asked was sharing of financial information so we could guarantee that they have the financial wherewithal to invest in this project. And Boring Company really wasn't willing to share that financial information with us, so they didn't make it through. We scored the next two companies, Planari and ACS, on the team and expertise of the team, their technical proposal, their commercial proposal, and finally, their financial pricing. They both scored well in the first three. You can see a major difference in the financial proposal. Planari priced themselves that they were willing to invest in the first two phases of the project development at their own financial risk. ACS bid four to 12 times the price for the project development, which showed they really weren't willing to invest in project development with their own money at risk, and they also weren't very financially feasible to move forward with them. So we're recommending only moving forward with Planari into Phase One. Planari leads the team with these other partners, and is also backed by their parent company, CDBQ, which is an investment arm of a Quebec pension firm. Both Planari and their parent company have invested in a lot of infrastructure projects around North America, where they're long-term investors. They don't develop the project and then flip it a couple years later. They hold it for the long term. One of the reference projects, one to point out, is the REM, but it's about a 40-mile light metro that CDBQ is finishing construction on and now doing commissioning and getting ready for revenue operations. It follows the same exact business model as what we're trying to do here with the Duran Airport Connector, but it's a much bigger, more substantial project. And they're finishing construction and moving towards operations, so we feel like they have the experience doing this. The technology they're bringing for the Duran Airport Connector is the GlideWays transit technology. It's a combination of small automated electric transit vehicles that can carry up to four people with luggage, paired with infrastructure that's basically the same you'd use for a dedicated bike way, a bike pred over crossing and bridges. So by using the lighter weight vehicles with a lot of commercial off-the-self technology, you're able to have a much lighter weight infrastructure, similar to a bike pred bridge rather than, if you look at, say, Eastridge Right Rail or elevated busways, a much heavier, more expensive intrusive infrastructure. And also, another point of that is because of these vehicle size, you go to the station, you order a vehicle to go to a certain stop, and you and your party enter that vehicle, and it's a point-to-point, because they pull off of the main travelway and stop at the station that'll take you directly to your location. That concludes our presentation.
Thank you. And I just also want to acknowledge, recognize the memo from Mayor Mahan, Vice Mayor Mayan, Councilmember Davis, and staff supports that recommendation within that memo.
Great. Thanks for that, John. Appreciate it. Thank you for the presentation. Appreciate that we are embracing innovative approaches and in a very thoughtful and diligent way exploring what possibilities may exist for the city. I think there's something very promising here, which we'll talk about. Why don't we go to public comment first?
Okay, I'm going to start with the people in the council chambers. I have Haroon Neel, John Pospleszek, Raj Singh. And when you hear your name, just start coming down, go to the microphone. You don't have to speak in any particular order, but I do appreciate if you say your first name and you get to the microphone. So again, that's Haran or Haroon Neel, John Raj Singh. I also have Shelley Doran and Mark Seeger. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, council members. You know, I just want to say that you said that our current transit system can't rise to the occasion. I just want to totally disagree with that. With the support of this council, our transit can rise to, you know, instead of driving four people at a time in a small unit. My name is John Pospleszek. I'm Vice President, ATU Local 265. I represent 1,525 ATU members currently and over 1,200 retirees. We're all workers for VTA. So I stand before you to express our strong opposition to this resolution to create a public-private partnership for a luxury pod system. This venture will degrade our current public transit system, isolate all the underserved people. You're going to spend money on this when you're not serving all the underserved people within this county. It's sort of appalling. You know, these underserved communities, they rely on it for their livelihoods. These communities play a crucial role in keeping the city's infrastructure running, and we must invest in their needs instead of this council. Instead, this council seems to be focusing on creating these luxury pods, which is not where the funds will make the most significant impact. It is essential to prioritize communities' needs. Passing this resolution would be a grave mistake and another drain on San Jose's limited tax funds. We urge the council to focus on improving public transit, on our public transit system, our current public transit system we already have, and not pass this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to call the names again. When you hear a name, come to the microphone or line up here in the middle, along the stairs, next to the security guard. We have Haroon Neel, Raj Singh, Shelley Doran, Mark Seeger, Dale Bonner, and Jake Wild. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Raj Singh, and I'm with ATU Local 265. And I urge council to vote against this proposed resolution and staff recommendation. There are multiple concerns with this proposed project, including the fact that some of the mentioned technologies are not yet available, and there is uncertainty around funding beyond the initial phases. This project seems very unrealistic and may not be feasible. Moreover, there are already viable transportation options, such as VTA, which has already invested state and federal funds to improve the Stevens Creek Corridor in the past few years. And additionally, some of you council members also serve on the VTA Board of Directors. And we can increase light rail frequency and add buses to the airport promptly. And by promptly, I mean by tomorrow, if you so choose. So therefore, I strongly urge you to vote against this item. And we would also welcome any council member to discuss this matter in further detail. Thank you.
Speaker?
Hi, my name is Haroon Neel. I am a student, transit enthusiast, and generally one of the few people my age who's actually involved. I think that the Duran Airport Connector as a pod system would be a huge mistake. But moving past that, there are lots of other solutions that could be better and much cheaper as well. We could just build bus lanes for the 60. We could ask, we could work with the VTA to reroute the 60 to maybe be a more specific connection between Duran, the airport, and another transit hub, if possible. And there are lots of small things we can do like that to not only speed up transit generally, but also to make a productive connector between Duran and the airport that wouldn't cost an outrageous amount of money and would be generally much more in line with what other cities around the country do, without needing to be innovative for innovation's sake, which isn't really much innovation at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and esteemed city council members. It's an honor for me to be here. My name is Mark Seeger, and I am the founder of the transit technology provider GlideWays. This is a day that I've been looking forward to for over three years. Our goal at GlideWays is to provide the best ride in the world at the lowest cost we can with the greatest throughput capacity and the lowest carbon footprint possible. Our vision is to connect people with employment, affordable housing, education, care, and each other. We think of this as public transit for everyone, everywhere. At GlideWays, we believe we must start with the passenger experience first, and refine it to an art, and then work backwards to the technology. This is how we are able to move up to 10,000 people per hour in a six-foot-wide lane, 24/7, on demand, and in a private car, safely, reliably, comfortably, and affordably. This is what guides us, and that's what we are all about. And it's what our partners are about, too. It's what I've seen all of you are about: excellence in the service of connecting more people better. My experience of working with your teams over the past few years has exemplified innovation and public service, and for that, I wish to thank you. With this project, San Jose will evolve the concept of public transit on the world stage, starting with the Duran to Manada Airport Connector. It is your leadership and vision that have gotten us here, and it is the example that you have set that we will do our best to follow, and we are extremely excited. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Hi, hello. Good afternoon. My name is Jake. I'm a student over at SJSU. My main way of getting around is on public transit. It's how I got here. It's how I get to school. It's how I get pretty much everywhere, besides walking. It's another good choice. And I understand that the purpose of this project is aiming to reduce costs, which is important, but it's also important to remember that you do get what you pay for. And while a grade-separated APM may cost more, it's worth pursuing, especially if the project intends to extend down the Stevens Creek-St. Carlos Corridor. The Stevens Creek-St. Carlos Corridor deserves to have high-quality, high-capacity, rapid transit. So please continue to explore options for this project, even if they cost a little bit more than what we would like. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Dale Bonner. I'm the chairman of Planari Americas. And as you've heard, and I believe in a number of staff briefings, that we are the developer that is proposing to enter into this pre-development agreement with the city of San Jose. Planari has the good fortune of being probably the largest private developer of public infrastructure in North America. And one of the reasons for our success is we have built a track record of working with public clients to bring innovative new solutions to very difficult public problems and to address public needs. And as you heard in the staff report this afternoon, there's been a lot of work that's been done over the last couple of years, just to bring us to this point of confirming the viability of an innovative solution that we are prepared to work with you and bring to the city. And really, we're just here today. We've got some of our partners that you've already heard from, a couple more you may hear from today as well. And we really just want to confirm our enthusiasm for having gotten this far and for starting to move into this next phase of confirming the viability of the concept that's been presented, and really to say a sincere word of thank you for the opportunity to work with you in this new and exciting venture. Thank you.
Next speaker?
Good afternoon, board members. I'm here for you to help me. This is abuse started January 3rd of 2023.
Ma'am, are you Martha? Are you Marta?
Yes.
Your item that you want to talk about is not this item. If you want to have a seat behind me, you're going to speak during open forum.
Okay.
Because it's a different topic.
I didn't understand. I just said.
Yeah, I understand.
Good afternoon, mayor and council members. I am Shelley Doran, and I'm here representing the joint venture partnership between Webcore Builders. We've been a longstanding constructor in your community for many years, and Obi Ashi Engineering, our parent company, who has built hundreds of miles of transit solutions all over the globe. We're happy to be a part of this partnership. We have worked well over the years with South Bay Labor Council, with the Santa Clara-San Benito Building Trades Council, and we look forward to be bringing a lot of high-paid construction jobs back to the city of San Jose. Very enthusiastic about this project, so thank you very much.
Okay, moving to virtual participants. Blair, followed by Crystal. Blair? Okay, moving on to Crystal, followed by caller 7995. Crystal put her hand down, so we're going to move on to caller 7995, followed by Paul. Please press star six. There you go.
Hi, good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Anthony Matur. That's November Alpha Charlie Hotel Oscar Romeo. And I would like to make a dissent on the upcoming plan for connecting SJC and downtown San Jose using, you know, like the next generation pods. I would be better off reconsidering that idea and bring it back to the VTA so that it can, so that you and the VTA can better collaborate on a better plan to connect both downtown San Jose and SJC Airport. I believe there is the Rapid 500 line, which can be easily extended from San Jose-Duran to SJC Airport, in which, in this case, it will be a much faster commute because you don't need to invest additional monies into a new alignment between the airport and downtown. And at the same time, it'll also allow the VTA to use the 500 as a fast connection between San Jose Airport and the BART station at Berrieta. And hopefully, you know, while the technology is already in the works, especially with the Heathrow Pods in London, I still believe that a bus connection would be a far better option than the pods, especially when a lot of people at San Jose seem to see the bus more than the pods. And, you know, the best option, I know this will be expensive, have a light rail service directly connect between the Metro Airport Station or anywhere along.
Paul, followed by Matthew.
Yes, Paul Soto from the Horseshoe. I'd like to thank the first speaker for attending and for posing a legitimate, very, very coherent argument against this project. I have a few issues with it. One of them is that it has circumvented the entire democratic process. What you did is you sold a lie to the voters. Yeah, let's vote for BART. Yeah, BART. Yeah, 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 yeah. Okay. Then, as things started moving along, Duran, Gordino, and Co. Duradon, Gordino, and company started, hey, well, let's do this. Let's add this because Licardo and Paralice and Carrasco are on the VTA board. The VTA board is stacked. And so is the BART. So what they were doing was there's conflicts of interest inherent in these proposals because you have members on the city council that are voting on this. I don't trust you to separate those. I don't trust you because you're human. And you're going to lie, and you're going to deceive the public and continue to use public monies and public funds to fund projects that never went through the democratic process. Now, if you want to start practicing fascism and tyranny, that's fine. We can go there. But don't do that enmasqueraded as democracy. That's the only issue I have. This is tyranny. This is fascism. And it's really actually like bordering on, like, almost like communism. Because what it is that we say is not even a part of the public record in the future. So it's like the words just kind of like dissolve into the ether. Thank you.
Matthew, followed by Rob.
Hello. Good afternoon, council. This connector featuring autonomous vehicles, I believe, is a step in the wrong direction for transits that we San Joseans deserve. As a lifelong resident of the city, I've used the airport countless times. And yes, I've always wondered why no rail connection between the terminals and the light rail station of Metro Airport existed. To begin, the contractor known as Glideways proposes a meager 52 by 48 inches of floor space for each pod, barely enough for four individuals in small luggage, yet a regular-sized VTA bus seats 18 passengers comfortably, and a light rail vehicle seats about 62. I am concerned that Glideways' vehicle cannot comfortably sit someone who requires a wheelchair, and thus, it may not be as adequate compatible as one would hope. Furthermore, I'm concerned that in a future pandemic, these pods would facilitate the spread of viruses due to the nature of strangers sitting close together in a small pod and, you know, them coming from an airport, which is a place infinitely known for spreading pandemics. A better solution that I and many other people in the transit community have suggested and have proposed is a better alternative to shuttle passengers between Duradon and our lovely Manetta Airport via an express bus service, an extension of the VTA light rail system, or perhaps a smaller and more cost-effective people mover system to the existing Metro Airport station on the VTA light rail. These solutions are more cost-effective, are more comfortable, and are proven through decades of safe and reliable track records. Thank you, council.
Rob, followed by Siddharth.
Hi, this is Rob Means. I'm speaking on behalf of Loopworks, the company creating the advanced transit system in Milpitas around the new BART station and the Great Mall. I want to encourage you to move forward on this project. We are essentially at the start of a $1 trillion industry. And we anticipate that a number of different styles of personal rapid transit, PRT, will come to the fore, be experimented with, and used in different scenarios. I would encourage all of the naysayers and others that are interested in learning more about the technology and its capabilities to visit our website. That would be milpitasprt.com. And just to give you a flavor for how this could be a huge addition or change in our transportation picture to dramatically reduce CO2 emissions, consider what we are getting for the $9 billion BART extension. Four stations. Four stations for that $9 billion. If we were to invest that in personal rapid transit technology, we could cover many, many square miles. In fact, using the particular lower-cost flavor that we anticipate using here in Milpitas, you could cover 100 square miles with 800 stations per square mile. Even with the somewhat more expensive technology that's being proposed by Glideways, you could cover most of downtown San Jose and provide unparalleled service with 24/7, nonstop, from origin to destination, any of those 800 stations, to any of the others, nonstop. So please move forward with this project and find out what this technology can do and what it really costs.
Siddharth, followed by Jason.
Hi, thank you and good afternoon. I live near Cahill Park and I fly out of San Jose from time to time. So I'm definitely interested in a transit connection between Duradon Station and the airport. But I feel that Plenary's technologies aren't suitable for this project, and the city should not move forward with the predevelopment agreement. So the vehicles they're proposing are just not suitable for a mass transit system, especially a line going to the airport. They're just comically small. We can't be forcing a family with luggage and young children split in a group and maybe make two, three trips back and forth from the train station to the airport. And when I was a student at Georgia Tech, I worked on our school's Formula SAE racing team on suspension systems for our school's race car. And I don't actually believe a vehicle with such a small wheelbase would even be stable and safe to ride. It's ridiculously narrow, and I can see that the pods potentially tipping over if they say hit a pothole or dealt with stiff winds on the guideway. Sure, Plenary could widen them, but then they'd have to widen the guideway, too, and we'd be approaching the cost levels of a conventional people mover system again. They're also saying these vehicles are going to be autonomous, but autonomous road vehicles with rubber tires and conventional steering, like Plenary's proposing, have been shown to be very unreliable with current technology. We see Cruise, which is a very advanced company up in San Francisco, struggling to make these work, whereas Plenary doesn't have any vehicles in regular operation right now. And they're saying they can do this, which is hard to believe. Additionally, they want the vehicles to be battery-powered, too, which means we'd have to use valuable land near our train station or the airport to set up a charging depot. And even if the system does work, it has insufficient capacity. And we don't want to replace one bus with 10 cramped pods. I appreciate the fiscal responsibility from the city council, but for a capital cost of nothing, the city could work with VTA to implement a shuttle between Duradon and the airport. And I hope the city council pursues that strategy instead. Thank you.
Jason, followed by Brett.
Hello, mayor and city council. My name is Jason Su with the Gualaber River Park Conservancy. I express support for the predevelopment agreement of the Duradon Station to Airport Connector project. We have seen across the country where infrastructure projects become community investments through public-private partnerships in Boston, Detroit, St. Louis, among others. I hope council will view this project as an opportunity for the Gualaber River Park. And we hope that through the PDA process, we could come to a vision, perhaps, of a station park and airport connector. We recognize that there are many details in the alignment and its potential impacts to park use and the environment. And we hope that the PDA process will provide opportunities for community input. And we appreciate the proactive outreach from the private partner team, and we look forward to collaborating on the solutions that uplift our priorities. Thank you.
Brett, followed by Kyle.
Hello, my name is Brett Garrett. I personally have devoted an enormous amount of time researching and supporting this type of transportation, looking at Glideways. I'm a mathematician. I'm a climate activist. The small vehicles work. The point is that there's many small vehicles in the system. They operate as a system. They don't require the same level of autonomy as a vehicle that's trying to run on public streets. They just need to run in their own lane. They're separated from the rest of the transportation system. They don't need the same sophistication that a vehicle needs to run autonomously on the vehicle. To those who are opposed, please take the time to understand the benefits of this system and how it works. It's better than you think. Watch Mark Seeger's presentation on YouTube. You can search for Dynamic Personal Mass Transit. He has a whole, well, it's more than half an hour explaining how the system works. Small vehicles do not mean that the system has small capacity. Do not conflate vehicle capacity with system capacity. This system provides very high capacity, measured in people per hour per direction. Higher capacity than a bus or, well, yeah. This will be a truly innovative form of transportation for San Jose. I love the concept of on-demand transportation, allowing people to show up anytime instead of being tied to a strict bus schedule. I love the safety aspect. I love the efficiency of this system. A large bus isn't efficient unless it's full. This system can be efficient even during off-peak hours. This is a first step. The system will need to be extended to other parts of the city to provide the full benefits. But this will help solve climate change. Please support this system. Thank you very much.
Kyle, followed by Rod Duradon.
Hello, my name is Kyle Posey, and I am a San Jose State student. As many other people who are not directly involved with this project, I strictly oppose this project. But let's just be honest. They are four-person vehicles. They sit the airport, pushes 1.3 million people through their doors per day. That would require 300,000 Glideway pods. And if you think that the pods will be great separated throughout the entire city, that is beyond idiotic and not exactly realistic. This is not a video game. Life is not a video game. San Jose dot is failing us at this moment because they are not considering proven technologies such as BART, which is already being extended past Guadalupe River, which could easily be extended down to the airport. This entire project, in my opinion, and other people's opinions, both online and, I assume, in person, that this project is gadget bond, I'm sorry, gadget bond, which is basically putting gadgets into everyday things where they don't need to be. We already have a bus. We know the bus works. We already have light rail. We know the light rail works. Why has the city not ever considered light rail down to the airport? Also, the only people who have supported this project are ones who are directly involved with this project. They say, "Search it up," but they never provide any proof.
Rod, followed by Crystal. Rod Duradon.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak. I am in no way involved with this project. I have no involvement with the people that manufactured it or studied it or anything else. But I can tell you that it's the future. It's the way, the best use of this technology is exactly what you're doing here, interconnecting two high-volume modes of transportation automatically. This will make the San Jose Airport the preferred airport for the North Central Valley. Taking a short, high-speed rail run in from the Central Valley High-Speed Rail Train up through Gilroy, stopping at Duradon Station, hopping on the pod system and getting off at your gate at the airport is the way it's done in other airports around the world. You can pass security in Fresno and not touch your bags again until you get to New York. And that's the future. And if we don't step in and build one of these things, it's going to be built eventually at some time in the future, but it'll be less expensive and more useful now. If you get ahead of the curve and build it now, it's the right thing to do. Let me tell you, I travel around the world and look at transportation. It's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Crystal, followed by Suyug.
Thank you, mayor and council, for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Crystal Conway. I'm with the San Jose Chamber of Commerce. We are here today in strong support for the staff recommendation on item 5.2, the SJC-Duradon Connector project. The chamber has been a strong supporter of the Airport Connector project since the voters approved it as part of the last several transportation sales tax measures. The approach the city is taking to pursue this agreement will attract private sector investors and innovation to deliver a public transit system that effectively connects riders to their destinations and has measurable outcomes with accountability for achieving its goals. The city of San Jose is a leader in innovation, and this connector project will bring new innovation to our transportation system and create an option for San Jose travelers that gets them out of their cars and into transit. This system also provides that last-mile connection to the Duradon Station, which will connect people to the train and to downtown San Jose. Connectivity like this will help revitalize our downtown and encourage more transit ridership. We look forward to this next important step in the process, and we urge your support. Thank you.
Suyug, followed by Lyden.
Hello. I understand where all of them are coming from, especially the people who advocate this project. However, I believe that even if we are connecting one major transportation hub with another major transportation hub, and it's sort of the last mile connection, and it helps revitalize central San Jose, I still think it's the wrong way to do it. So for starters, the pod system is not transit. It is really a different form of a car in that the pods can hold four people, just like cars. Nothing more, and much less. They are called personally. So this is what I believe completely destroys the ridership of these pods, which is that when they're called personally, each person won't just choose to get in a pod. They call it personally with three strangers. Because when transit comes at measured time intervals, everyone goes on at once. When it's a personally-called car, only one person's going to go on. Things can hold four people. Almost all these pods will almost always hold one person, except for a few, it's families, because people will just get on the strangers on personal vehicles. Another issue is the cars themselves are run by batteries. The production of lithium-ion batteries is not good for the environment. And, see, of course, electric vehicles are better than, like, gas-operated vehicles, but they are still inferior to electric trains. Electric trains have been around since the 19th century. Electric trains are more carbon-efficient than what we believe to be these new vehicles. They transport far more people because on a larger train, you get the major bonus of being able to have people stand up when there's incredible amounts of people passing through. A lot of people say that, oh, we can just get a lot of cars and keep the transit, like, number of people to put high. But how...
Carlos, followed by Blair.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Hi, yes. My name is Carlos Ferrer. I'm a longtime resident, and I also work in San Jose. For me, I'm very enthusiastic about an airport connector, or the connection between the airport and Duradon. However, my main concern, I actually have two concerns. For starters, we already have pre-existing infrastructure that could be, you know, improved on. The light rail being stunted and the bus service being infrequent could be enhanced in a way that serves the airport. Another issue I have is, really, aside from the Tesla-Vegas loop and the Heathrow loop at the Heathrow Airport, there really isn't any, at least I haven't seen any tangible results, from this personal transit thing. I do recall something similar occurring with Jacksonville, but they themselves have also yet to come up with any tangible proof of concept that these pods would not only be efficient, but also reduce traffic. And just to kind of go back to what someone had mentioned earlier, yeah, this is a gadget bond. And yeah, for sure, good luck trying to stuff an entire family with multiple baggages into one of these pods, so.
Blair, followed by Lyden.
Hi, Blair Beekman. Thanks for coming back around and seeing my public hand, or seeing my hand for public comment. When that happens in the future, you'll probably know I have two Zoom public meeting, you know, devices in action. So sorry for the trouble. For this item, I just wanted to, it's my point of view, and it's my feeling that, you know, this is an issue that really has to concern the VTA and that we have to really have sensitive, caring conversations about the VTA when talking about these things. I think their feelings are hurt, as they should be. I think we, we are just in a real overhaul of how to build the future of our morale around VTA issues and issues of the future of the light rail. I think there's a way to salvage and make, and create a good light rail system that, you know, Mayor Liccardo, the previous mayor, worked really hard to decimate. He was just full out in front to really hurt the light rail system and it was sad that that was happening. If there is, if this project does what it's supposed to be doing and it's a way to kind of, you know, the mayor wanted to put this project as a light rail project and, and turn it into, you know, the AV project with rubber wheels along the light rail. He's been diverted into this airport project. How can this be a way, can there be a way in practicing with these things? That, can we have guarantees that this, in 20 years' time, we can still practice light rail things? And that by 2040 would be the time to then put this to VTA use? Because I think that's what VTA people are afraid of. We should have some guarantees about the planning structure of this and can be talked about.
Lyden.
Hey, everybody. Good afternoon. My name is Lyden George. I am a resident of San Jose, D6. Live right near Deardon. I'm also a public transit and alternative transit advocate and I'm a professional transportation planner. I work at SFMTA in San Francisco. I'm at work right now, but I wanted to comment. I'm a huge proponent of big, you know, transformative transportation infrastructure. This connector, though, major red flag in that it doesn't seem like there's any integration with VTA or any sort of, you know, planning at the outset, working with our existing county agency, who's comprised of so many talented, dedicated people. And, and that's just a tremendous red flag. And the fact that, and you know, other people mentioned that there's people, there's six, you know, people at the, at the podium right there that are part of the Board of Directors of VTA. So to have that kind of breakdown in communication, it's just unfathomable to me. And I understand there's a lot of people like the mayor that are new to, or at least new in their position. So I just feel that, you know, at the outset, if you can't cooperate and collaborate with the agency that's been doing transportation work for 30 years and have been working, you know, tooth and nail to fight through pandemic and everything, just for a shiny new toy, which, again, in isolation, it's an amazing idea and, and, you know, major props to the companies that put together their proposals, because that's a lot of work and it's really cool concepts, but if you're not working with VTA, if you're not working with the people, it's not for the people ultimately. Thank you all.
Anthony.
Good afternoon. Thank you to the mayor, city council, and city staff for allowing me this opportunity to speak. First of all, I'm a big supporter of public transit and a proponent of investment in new transit services. I'd like to echo the concerns that have already been raised about investing public dollars in speculative technology that has yet to actually be successfully deployed anywhere in the world. I also have severe concerns about the capacity of the proposed system and its suitability for extension along the Stevens Creek Boulevard corridor. My primary feedback today, however, is centered around the project's proposed private pod technology and how well it aligns with the city's 2040 general plan and climate goals. So the city memorandum put together by staff states that the project will advance VMT reduction goals as well as the goal to drive a 50% reduction in trips made by single occupancy vehicles. However, due to the private pod nature of the proposed system, many of the rides that actually end up being fulfilled by this technology, if it ends up getting built out, would still be single occupancy. I think the best way to kind of drive home this point is with a simple thought experiment. So the year is 2035. Two passengers arrive at Deardon Station en route to SJC. One hails an electric autonomous EV from Waymo and another hails an all-electric autonomous EV from GlideWays. Under the current proposal, it seems like one of these trips would be tallied up to the city's VMT and single occupancy rider metrics and the other would not. And I don't think the current city policy really provides a strong justification for treating these scenarios so differently. So if the city does decide to move forward with this project, I'd encourage the city to work on rationalizing this distinction and updating all relevant city policies to kind of factor in how personal rapid transit really, you know, factors into and addresses our city's climate goals. Thank you.
Back to council.
Thank you, Tony. I want to make a few introductory comments before handing it over to my colleague, Councilor Davis, whose district this project would be in. And I'll start by just saying, I love public transit. I have relied on buses and trains my entire life, starting at 13 years old, taking multiple public buses from Santa Cruz County over to San Jose for high school. And since then, have used buses and trains throughout my life to commute to work and get around. So I am a big fan of the access that public transit offers, particularly to low-income residents. I, at the same time, believe that the world is not static, that we should always be looking to innovate, to improve. And the reality is, right now, there's a lot of exciting changes happening in the mobility space. There's a lot that this exploration represents that is, I think, very worthy of exploration. Autonomy, electrification, the idea of having smaller vehicles, vehicles that could be on, on demand, the potential to better leverage existing right-of-way, innovation in the way that we finance projects and deliver them more cost-effectively. There's a lot here that is worth exploration. But it, it doesn't mean that we have to take on great risk to better understand those opportunities. And I think that's maybe the most important point here is that the step that we're contemplating today is really a very measured next step that allows us to really understand the business case and whether or not this will work for San Jose and our residents. And, you know, when you think about the role or the mission of an entity like VTA or the city, you know, VTA isn't just a transit operator. VTA is a congestion management agency. And I think it's, it's the mission of VTA and it's the mission of the City of San Jose to think about how we enable and empower our residents to go about their daily lives in the way that's most convenient and productive and solve problems for people fundamentally. And so if we're going to continue to be the capital of Silicon Valley, I think we've got to be open to embracing innovation and in a thoughtful and measured way, experiment. And at least, at least learn. This, to me, is really about learning. This is not, to me, just about GlideWays or Plenary or even the train station or the airport, though I think that's a pretty obvious use case. But this is really about learning about the really significant technological trends that are happening in our world and thinking about applications here that might benefit our residents, which is fundamentally what this is all about. We may get a little bit down the road here and after we've explored it, say, there are a variety of reasons why this doesn't make sense. Great. It's a pretty minimal cost to really fully understand that. So I, I just, I wanted to start there, which I, just to frame that up for folks. This is not some huge risky commitment. This is not us in any way wanting to undermine our public transit agency. I think there's a lot of promising innovation here that we should be fully exploring. And frankly, we're behind a lot of other cities that have gone much farther down some of these, these roads than we have. So with that, I want to turn it over to my colleague, Councilor Davis, to say a little more.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to thank everyone who commented from the public. I really appreciate your respectful tone, regardless of your support for this item. And I do want to assure you that even those of us who are not on VTA are in contact with VTA and well aware of their, the staff stance on it and the board's stance on transit between Deardon and the airport. So I just want to get that out there. And I'll say more about that in a little bit. First question I have about the timeline, and I don't know if Ramses want to, want to touch on this, but it was six to 12 months. Can we get it closer to the six months duration for this feasibility versus the 12 months? What, why is it such a, why do we have to study this for a year?
Yeah, great question. Thanks. We would like to stick, stick to the shorter timeframe as much as we can, but there's a lot of information we need to gather here, right? There's a lot of, of all these questions that are being brought up. Is this the right technology? Is it viable? You know, is it just a gadget? We need to make sure that that's true or not. And, and we don't want to put a definite, we're going to come back to you six months from now and then trip over ourselves. We're giving ourselves enough time to study this correctly. We would love to come back to you in six months and keep going, or not. But right now, we were trying to give ourselves enough of a pocket to really study what's happening, both in that. And also, we really have to do the, the business analysis case here, right? We have to make sure that this is viable at a financial level, both at the public and the private side, since we are eventually going to be asking the private side here to be taking on a significant risk. So that's my, my somewhat pillowy answer, but yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that. And then Mark from GlideWays, if you could come down, I have a few questions for you. Just want to make sure the, I've gotten a briefing and I've written in the pods, if that's what we're calling them. But I just want to make sure the public is, is aware a little bit more. If you could explain a little bit how, how the vehicles work and what's required to make them autonomous?
Sure. Thank you, council member. I appreciate the question. And also appreciate you visiting and taking a ride in one of our earlier systems. So the vehicles are designed to accommodate four people as well as enough room to accommodate a mechanized wheelchair or a double-wide baby stroller. And this is what makes them ADA compliant and that defines the floor space of the vehicle. They operate autonomously but on closed, dedicated infrastructure. Not unlike a roadway or a railway, we build our own GlideWays. They're five and a half feet wide, about the size of a bicycle lane. And they're mode-agnostic, meaning they can go at grade on the ground. They can go elevated above ground and they can go below ground as and when required. When we are at grade, what we will do is put up a fence on both sides to prevent incursions from people, animals, basketballs, all those kinds of things. And what that allows us to do is leverage the maturity level of autonomous vehicle technology that has been fairly mature for about a quarter century, give or take a little bit, for closed-road autonomous systems. As one of the commentators pointed out quite accurately, open-road autonomy, Cruise, Waymo, Tesla, companies like that, they're pursuing a form of autonomy that, to my knowledge, has not yet been invented. And we can have a discussion as to when it will be invented. I'm sure it will be at some point, but it's not ready for usage yet. Whereas closed-road autonomy has been around for quite some time in industrial and commercial use cases. And so we leverage that. The reason we close our roads is A, for safety, to prevent incursions and collisions, as I mentioned to you before. B, to leverage mature technology that is commercially fairly commoditized, the closed-road autonomy that I mentioned. But also C, to provide the very thing we were trying to deliver in the very first place, which is higher capacity, higher throughput mobility than a road can deliver. If a road could solve this problem, ladies and gentlemen, we would just build another road, or two, or three. But roads suffer from very low bandwidth, very low throughput. In fact, they suffer from congestion. Congestion is a symptom of more people wanting to use the road than the road can handle. And that's not because of the vehicles or who or what is driving those vehicles. It is because of the infrastructure bottlenecks, like a pedestrian crossing and many others that I could share with you that inhibit the flow of open roads. And so what we do is we build our own roadway, a glideway, if you will, where we remove the bottlenecks to capacity. And so now you have the trifecta of a technology that is very mature, a roadway that is very safe because we put up fences or elevate it as necessary, and the throughput that solves a fundamental problem that we are trying to address, which is moving a large volume of people in a fairly short amount of time at the lowest cost with a passenger experience that people will actually want to use.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Can you say a little bit more about the size of the vehicles? I myself have, I think I was in one and they've gotten a little bit bigger since the ones that I was in. I was a little bit concerned about the size of the vehicles being too small for a family with luggage. And people are going to have luggage going to the airport. Can you talk a little bit about the size now? And you talked about the double stroller, but if a family of four is going away for a week, are they all going to fit with their luggage in one pod?
One of the, the benefits of being the founder of the company and also six foot six tall, that I am right here, is to make sure that the vehicle can accommodate me and my family. And so to your point, we have indeed grown the vehicle both in width and in length to accommodate a family of four tall people with luggage and/or German Shepherd dogs, which is part of my family, and bicycles as well. We have a, you may recall, we have a bike slot in the vehicle, which means we have to accommodate the entire length of a bicycle plus the people. So our vehicles, I'm very happy to say, have grown significantly since you took a ride. I can get the exact dimensions for you. But basically, the way we like to think about the floor space, not the square, not the cubic footage of volume, but the floor space, is four people have more space in our vehicle than you do in a minivan that would seat four people. And so we've done our best to accommodate that.
Thank you. That's very helpful. That's it for my questions for you. I appreciate you coming down and taking the time.
Thank you, council member.
So I, next I want to thank Jason from the Guadalupe River Park Conservancy for commenting and support. We know we don't have a path yet between Deardon and, and the airport, but we, we are committed to working together with, with GRPC and all of our stakeholders to ensure that we are meeting all of our goals, not just our transportation goals, but also our recreation and our environmental goals when we're doing this airport connector. And I am personally committed to that as both the Guadalupe River Park and Deardon and the airport, all three are in my district. So the nice thing about redistricting is now it's under only one council member to, to do all of that. Second, or third, I don't know, I'm, I forget where I am. But I want to talk a little bit about the, the history of VTA and VTA's involvement in this. When they were planning the BART extension, there was discussion with, with the Department of Transportation and this all precedes me and I'm sure it precedes Ramses and probably everybody in the box. But we had asked as a city and were very involved in the, the route that BART was going to take and really wanted the airport to be a stop on BART. That was not in the cards. And if it wasn't in the cards back then, when we had our first, our first ballot measure, I can tell you now with construction starting in July or June, that there is no way that, that BART can be added to that. That would have been my preference. I think everybody in the box, that would have been their preference because then you don't have to do multimodal transportation and transit. And people, it's much easier to just get on BART and be on BART from wherever, wherever you're coming from, Barriessa or, or anywhere else. And to stay there and to go straight to Deardon, I know it's, it's just easier. It's, it's a hassle if you ever have to go to SFO. You have to, if you're taking transit from here, you get on Caltrain and then you have to get off at Millbrae just to take BART for one stop to get to the airport and it's kind of a pain in the butt. But here we are. We have to do it this way because BART is not an option. And in terms of light rail, light rail, as I think we all know, is very expensive and very slow. And even if we're just talking about the cost per passenger, that just the, not even the fixed cost of putting down the rail, but just the cost per rider, it's about $17. So that is a very, very highly subsidized and very expensive mode of transportation. And again, with VTA Next Network, that was in discussion when I first started in office, nothing different to the airport was even, even on the table with, with that iteration of the board. Not buses, not light rail. So as much as we would like VTA to, to be involved in this, I wholeheartedly agree with staff's assessment of that. VTA is focused elsewhere. And this is where we, as the capital of Silicon Valley, need to step up and say, no, we actually need transit to our airport. We want to ensure that Deardon, when it expands with the electrification of Caltrain, which is coming before the end of 2024, happily before the end of my term, we, we want to be able to take advantage of that. And so we want, we want to ensure that there is a connection to the airport. And the nice thing, I know there's some discussion by public comment about, you know, is GlideWays even working? Are we even working with VTA to, to sync up schedules? With GlideWays, you don't have to sync up schedules because it really is a dedicated, these pods are dedicated and they go from point to point and it's on-demand. So you don't need to sync up any schedules, which is fantastic and a fantastic feeder for, for rail as well. And then second to last, before I make the motion, I just want to put a plug in our West San Carlos and Stevens Creek corridor. That is our innovation corridor, thanks to our That is our innovation corridor, thanks to our previous vice mayor, Chappy Jones, and it's, as I think we all know, an employment and a shopping center and our, kind of our connection to Apple, which can provide many more potential riders because they have so many employees at their spaceship. So with that, I will move the memo authored by the mayor, the vice mayor, and myself, which includes staff recommendations as well as the West San Carlos and Stevens Creek corridor. Thank you.
I would second that.
Thank you, council member. Councilor Cohen?
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate the motion and the, also the keeping in mind the Stevens Creek corridor. What I really have liked about the Glideways technology is the extendability and expandability of it. Once we have a proven concept on one route, it actually will be pretty easy. I don't know if anyone wants to comment about the extendability and how we could branch off and do other things from the first line, but I think that that's a really powerful aspect of this kind of transit versus what we're used to. The rail transit is much tougher to expand and branch from. I don't know if this is a, maybe not a question for DOT, but a, just a comment for future thought as well. We have a, we have a light rail line at First Street at Airport Parkway, and there's a little gap between the two. It seems to me that once we build a line, that having a T to just get bridge that little difference might be a relatively inexpensive but worthwhile connector. Any thoughts about that?
Maybe we can, so to alleviate the team running up and down, we could probably answer a little bit of the scalability and then the other suggestion too.
So, go ahead. So first, thanks for the suggestion, as we look into potential future alignments, we can talk about that. So we built this RFP and the pre-development agreement around scalability, right? The airport connector in itself is an incredibly valuable link, but the further extension is really the larger game here, right? Is there a way to make transit grow and scale that much faster? And that's what we want to find out here. We don't know if that's the case yet. We believe it is. We wouldn't have selected this process or in this company and this recommendation without thinking this could be that. But again, we're in the, we're in the point, as the mayor said in his opening remarks, we're in the point of study. We're in the point of fail fast, right? Let's figure this out, let's see if it's possible. I will say, it's easier than building light rail, that's for sure, but it's still hard. You're still talking about building a separated glideway, right? And you still have to figure all that stuff out. But it's easier than doing the other way, so. Yeah, but the throughput, right, in terms of how many people it can carry, looks like it can accommodate what we're looking for in the Stevens Creek line. And the ability to scale, right, in terms of operations, not only throughput, but operations, right? How many vehicles is it going to take to run and them not? Anyways, I'm rambling now, but I'll leave it there. All right? Was that, that's fine.
I was only going to add some to the VTA collaboration whenever that was appropriate.
Let me ask you about the VTA collaboration. Anything else to say?
So I wanted, Councilmember Davis brought it up, and thank you for that, because it's really an important point, and that is that VTA is the manager of the 2000 sales tax measure, which included an airport, a rail airport connection. So they have always had it on their books to do something like this. So they are an integral part of what we have been doing and are doing. So while the VTA board has not taken a position on this particular specific decision, they did support this whole effort by funding using measure, 2000 Measure A sales tax, our initial work on this. VTA staff has also been participating in integral to writing of the request for information three, four years ago with us. They helped us write the RFP, and they were participating on the selection panel for this measure. So they're very supportive of us moving something forward into an exploratory phase to find out how this will work, so.
And the entire idea as well, or part of the idea as well, is to have a interup, interchange in terms of the ticketing system, right, and using Clipper Card, and it would all be connected to what all the other systems are using?
Yes.
That is in the actual RFP, it's all in there. You must integrate with that, and not only, not only integrate with the card system, but the fare system, meaning, for example, there's a regional fare-based means cost-reduction program that is part of the initial inking of what we think the long-term agreement would be.
So VTA will have to be integrally involved in a lot of these conversations to make all that work.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. One other thing that I think, I mean, I had the, I had the option, the ability to go up there a year ago as well, the opportunity to go and ride one of the vehicles. I'm glad to hear they're a little bit bigger also than when I was there, but it's not always clear from these discussions, the distinction between this and a traditional system, because the reserved vehicles will have the ability to take you exactly to your destination without interim stops. So there is an efficiency that happens here that doesn't happen with the traditional systems, and I think it's important to have that. The other, the other thing I want to mention is, our airport is really one of the few airports that doesn't have any kind of people mover, and there's a part of this project that's not just about, it really isn't just about Dehradon to the airport in my mind. I think an important element of this is the interterminal, the intra-terminal connection and the parking lot connections that would be served by this system that would make, travel at the airport and to parking lots and other things more convenient as well. These, this system wouldn't just be a line from Dehradon to the airport, but would be within the airport. Is there anything you want to add about that, John?
I think the agreement right now shows that interterminal connection as an option, and I'm supportive of it because I currently run buses, but we need to look at the operating cost long-term to say, is this going to be cheaper than me continuing to run buses to the parking lots and stuff? So I think it's interesting, I'd really like to get into it and see those numbers because it would be a much better system for us if it maintains that affordability compared to our busing operation that we have now.
Yeah, and I think it's important as we continue to hopefully grow our airport and have more passengers to have the kind of connectivity that other airports have with systems that are just similar to this. They're, of course, they're a little different because they're mostly trains on tracks as well, but they're autonomous vehicles that are separated from the roadways and eliminate that issue of congestion. And another point about this really is that congestion, someone raised the point about using roads in traditional systems leads to congestion, and so keeping this, all these trips off of those roadways is an important congestion management piece. I think that's, that's all the comments I want to make. I think, I'm happy to support the continuing exploration to see how this pencils out, if it does, and, you know, looking at some of these new technologies to see what we can do, and then hopefully learn from it and see whether it becomes a way, a transportation option for the future.
Next, council member. Councilor Foley?
Thank you, thank you for the presentation, thank you for the briefing yesterday, that was very helpful. I also want to thank the members of the public who commented, whether they're supportive of the project or not, your input is really helpful to the decision and the discussion. I have a couple of questions for you. One is regarding Phase 1, there's an initial budget estimate of $1 million. Who bears that expense? Who pays for that?
That's our expense, is the city. That's the amount of money that we're paying, mostly consultants as well, yeah, to go through, making sure that everything we're getting back from the plenary team is up to par. There is also a bit where we need to hold on to half a million dollars in case we choose to end the contract at the end. There is some money that would go to the plenary team to cover a fraction of the cost they'll be spending in this process as well, and that's called a separation payment.
So are you saying it's a million plus the 500, or a million less the 500 if we don't go forward? We owe them 500?
Yeah, that's right. The latter.
Got it, it's still a million, but we owe them 500 if we don't go forward?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Likewise, if we get to the end of Phase 1 and we want to move forward and they decide not to, we don't pay them the one, the half million. They don't, they don't get paid anything. So that's the at-risk part. You know, they may probably investing more than that, and if they decide not to move forward, they don't get paid.
Okay, but if we decide that we're not going to move forward, which is a council decision based on the 12, six to 12 months analysis that we're going to receive, and frankly, I encourage you to be as thorough as possible. So 12 months is, it may not meet Councilmember Davis's timeline, but to have more information would be really important because it's a big commitment for us to move forward. On, thank you, on Phase 2, when is SEQA done? When is there an environmental impact report? And who's paying for that?
Sure. So Phase 2 would be when we would do the SEQUA NEPA analysis. It involves both preliminary design, so the designing the project, and then doing environmental analysis on that. The way we've structured the PDA right now, a plenary and their team would be doing all the project development and design, and we would be leading and paying for the environmental process. So in their, in their proposal, they have a payment, you know, if we walk away at the end of Phase 2 and everything's been done, of 13 million for their design work, and then we have to cover the environmental cost. So that's why there's a range there, we're, you know, we're working on an estimate of what that would be.
Okay, and during, thank you, and during the Phase 2 period, is that when we're looking for funding, for grants? And what is the likelihood that we might be able to get grant funding for this project?
We are, have been, and are looking for funding as of months and months and months ago. We've already got a little bit from VTA. We are working with our IGR team and our internal IGR team to identify other sources. We're in discussions with MTC and the state about potential ways to do that. We are certainly hoping that grants will cover a significant portion of the future costs for us, both in project development and of course in the final build.
Okay, so the financial component is really important of whether we're going to need general funds, capital improvement funds, taxation, whatever method we look at to fund this project. Hopefully, to the members of the public who are listening, I'm not advocating for taxes, I'm hoping for federal grants and other grants that might work to help us. But at what point is this a go or no-go situation for the city council?
The final, so there are basically four main decisions, right? There's the one now, there's the one to go into Phase 2, there's the one to then to say, go into the final negotiations, and that's going to be the project implementation agreement. That project implementation agreement is where everything gets hashed out and the final, real, long-term relationship gets built or gets devised, so that we can then say, go build. So it's, once we agree on that final implementation agreement, and council, of course, will have a chance to say yes or no to what it is, but we'll come in and ask for direction. This is how we think this negotiation should go. You guys will give us further direction on that, then we would come back with that agreement and see if it's, if it's to your liking.
Okay. I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing this go forward further so we can get more information. I don't feel I have enough information to say no to this project. I want to see this go forward at this point, but that doesn't mean it's a blanket yes until we get the studies back in 12 months. And I do want to thank Glideways and the plenary folks for your involvement and your commitment to this project. I think it's exciting and it's interesting technology. I'm not a huge tech person, but I can see the benefit of this kind of system from the airport to San Jose. I'm also aware of the relationship or cognizant of the relationship between VTA and the City of San Jose, and how important that is in our multimodal transportation, and how important it is that we work together in all avenues. So with that, I'll conclude my questions, thank you.
Thanks, council member. Councilor Batra?
Thank you very much for bringing this innovative technology project. As you know, that I've been on the Smart City Advisory Board, and I come from the tech background, so I am always looking to find new technologies which can be adopted by the cities, and because in the long term, they prove to be more effective and they tend to be more cost-effective, and they also have, bring the efficiencies, and they bring solutions which can be replicated to the, to the newer timeframes we are dealing with. So thanks for all that and the work you have already done. I do have a couple of questions to clarify. So the first one would be is, a couple of my colleagues have already taken rides in your cars and, or the mobiles, and they obviously have been very impressed with it, they're sold on it. Would public, if they wanted to look at your pilot devices, can they, by making an appointment or on certain open house days, can they come and see what technology are we proposing so that they can be easily buying into it, just like my colleagues have bought into it?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Batra. They are not ours, I want to be clear, I'm a city staff member, they are Glideways, so I'm going to ask a member from Glideways to come down and answer that question as to whether they're open to that kind of visit.
Thank you again for the question, council member. We would love to host people at our facility. It is, of course, an engineering facility and schedules are what they are, but we would absolutely do our best to accommodate your visit or those of anybody else's who are interested, as we can manage to serve.
Yeah, we would, we'd love to get the details with what restrictions should we make our visit plans, and because I'm pretty sure some of our members of the leadership groups, neighborhood associations and all that, they may want to visit and get to know that. So we'd like to make it as convenient as possible for you because you can't host hundreds of people at the same time, so.
Yeah, but don't mistake my comments for anything but enthusiasm. We've labored for seven and a half years to invent this technology and create it. We would love nothing more than to have as many people as possible, including everyone before me, experience it.
Okay, thank you very much. So we will get the details and try to ask the people who want to come with us and come to that visit.
That'd be wonderful.
And council member, I'll just interject briefly. Glideways was kind enough last year to come here to just outside of the rotunda and have a setup where council members, members of the public could come, sit in the vehicle, learn more, not quite the same as going out to the facility, but that might be a more accessible way to open that up to everyone. So we can take it offline.
Yeah, so we can take that. The main thing would be, public who's interested should be able to see it so that they can be sold on it, just like a lot of us. The second question is that the RFP called for less than $500 million project. This is a multi-year away project to be completed, a lot of escalations happened to the things. Is there any safeguards in there that we are not going to exceed the $500 million?
The $500, $500 million is a cost of, how do you say, a basis of design cost, right? Target, thank you, it's a target. Are there safeguards that it will absolutely not go above that number? No. This is, this is the real world, we have to design a real project and we have to figure it out, and we most certainly intend for it to be much less. We know we don't have access to a lot of public funds to get us anywhere near that number, right? So there's a lot of incentives built into the way we've built this contract that should keep the costs low, both to the public, but also hopefully to the overall project, right? Because the more capital that's expended and the more debt that's taken on, the higher cost tickets will be, right, which will lower ridership, right? And so there's a lot of, we've built the overall structure of the contract such that the long-term viability of the project is borne by both the public and the private sector partners, right? And that's intended to help keep costs down.
Okay. And I think you may have already talked about this item, in case I missed it, excuse me. Is it something which has been deployed anywhere else, or this is, San Jose is going to be the very first one to deploy this?
We've deployed it in our own R&amp;D facility. San Jose is likely to be the first commercial deployment, although of course we are working on other projects as well, so timing TBD.
Okay, all right, thank you very much, and lots of luck in getting things done, and we'll be looking forward to visiting your facility.
Thank you, council member, so are we.
Thanks, council member. Councilor Jimenez?
Yeah, thank you, just a few questions. One is that-
One is that, listening to Councilmember Foley's question, Ramsey's, about the no-go, no-go decision, if you will. I think when you answered the question, you were speaking sort of globally over the course of the, but what I'm curious about is, within the Phase One, all this analysis is going to be done, the business case analysis, but you, as staff, are going to, I'm sure, give a recommendation to us, and then we're going to vote on that. But sort of what framework or how are you, what are the key things that you're looking at? And I have a sense as to what they may be, but I'd like to hear from you in order to recommend go, no-go at the end of Phase One. Is it primarily money? I mean, I'm trying to...
Yeah, yeah. So we were just having a discussion about capital cost. As part of the proposals, we asked the basis of design to be no more than 500, but we didn't ask them to come in with an actual price for the system because we're so early in the proposals. So as part of the feasibility validation report, we're looking at what are the potential alignments, getting enough refining of the initial planning that we can start getting cost estimates for that. We've done a ridership study that's posted on our website, but they're bringing in their own ridership consultant to do that and look at the fares. Because they're looking to see if, in the RFP, we've said, you know, potentially raising up to $150 million that they can contribute to capital. So they need to look at their ridership to see, can they cover the operating cost plus the capital contribution? So we're starting to get more of those numbers that we don't have right now, where we wouldn't want to come to Council and say, you know, let's go, no-go on this whole project. We don't have those numbers. So it's those initial ridership, operating capital cost alignments, sort of what are the barriers we see, the potential impacts of various alignments that we'll be bringing back with the feasibility validation report, and then any amendments we need to do to the PDA at that point. And when we have those numbers, we have the very good cost estimate for what Phase Two would take and what fundraising we've been able to do between now and then. You know, we can put all of those in front of the Council for a decision, do we want to, do we want to move into the next phase and spend that larger amount to do the project development, to, so we get an environmental document, we get a design, we can pick an alignment.
So everything you just described at the end of Phase One, that's where that recommendation is going to emerge based on what you just described, ridership and things of that nature. And when we're talking ridership, because I know there was, in the memo that was put out, it's related to some of the transit mobility down San Carlos and Stevens Creek. When you're talking ridership, are you talking about, is the analysis going to focus strictly on if this was built, how many people would get on this to go to the airport? Is that?
Yes.
Very clearly? Okay. All right. And then, and then, I see the look on your face, Ramsey, do you want to say something?
I want to kind of boil it down really quick, simply, right? So we have, in the pre-development agreement, the feasibility report outlined that is going to come back to us. And it focuses on basically three things, right? One, is this technology viable, right? And it's a really big question. It seems really cool. It seems like it could really do some interesting things. But we really need to understand, not only does the vehicles work, right, but does the network of vehicles work? That's kind of the harder problem here. That's really the innovation of this technology. Can 100, 200, 300 of these vehicles be running and all be synchronized in such a fashion that can actually carry the people, you know, from stations, right? I mean, we really have to think about, you're going to get crushes of people coming out of airplanes, right, going to Diradon, and you really have to say, can you actually clear those people out? Can you actually make this into a viable solution? So that's one. Two, is this financially viable, right? And that's a two-sided question, right? Is it financially viable to run the business, right? Because we are not intending to run this. We are intending to oversee this as a system. But this will not be a San Jose-operated system. This will be a San Jose overseen system, as in a franchise-like agreement, right? So we need to make sure the private side can sustain the business, and we need to understand how much we, as the private, public sector, will need to bring to make this viable. All right? So those are kind of the major questions that we're going to be trying to answer.
Okay. And based on the business case, I, what I assume is there's an, based on everything I've heard, and we've touched this a few times, my apologies, but I know we, it's been a little while, but based on what I heard, there's an assumption that there's, there's obviously a cost associated with it. Assuming the technology works, assuming we want to build it, assuming we want to be in partnership, folks are going to pay to get on this for the flexibility to then get, take it to the airport or do whatever we do, right?
Yeah, it's definitely a revenue system between the airport and Diradon. Now, inside the airport, this is why it's an option, right? That the revenue for that, have you ever, have you ever paid for an inter, inside?
Never.
No, right? So that's not a viable way to do it.
And that's where I'm going with some of my questions for John. Because this is sort of, assuming it goes that direction, it's going to be in the airport, but it also comes out, right? The ones I have ever been all around the world operate solely within the airport, right? At least the ones I've been on. And so, but I was curious, John, if you can, I don't know, maybe at some point in past conversations, you've chimed in on this, so I apologize if you've answered this question in the past, but I get, I'm curious, separate from the technology, separate from the business case, and I assume maybe it's sort of tied to the business case, but I'm wondering, is the demand there for our airport to, you know, is there going to be enough people that are pouring out of the airport onto this, coming to Diradon and going the opposite direction into the airport? And I'm wondering if that's going to be part of the analysis or if you already know, and I'm sorry if I missed it, if it was with...
No, I think that part of this, part of this first phase brings out that passenger study from Diradon to the airport. If we're looking at the inner airport leg, going from Terminal B to the long-term parking lot or Terminal A to the long-term parking lot, I can tell you there's enough people to justify this at a certain cost. I mean, I'm already busing a certain amount of people every hour, right, to the long-term parking lot, and I pay a certain amount for those buses, right, to run and buy new buses and all of that. And so if what I spend currently on inner terminal transportation is similar to what this technology would want to charge me, then it would be a positive to do the option also, right? The option between the terminals and the parking lot. If it's more expensive, then as a council and a staff, we have to decide, is it the right time to make an additional investment or do we stick with buses on the internal route and just this Glideways from Diradon to the airport? So I think it really allows us to pick and choose what's affordable, what works for us, and what's the best thing for the airport and for the community getting back and forth.
Okay. All right. The other, the other thing that came to mind as I was looking over this is that, I know actively, the Oakland Coliseum stop, they have a BART sort of people mover, if you will, for lack of a better word, that goes from there to the Oakland Airport. Are we going to be looking at that? Do we, I mean, I know it's uniquely different in some ways, but I'm curious how effective that is.
Sure. So for the BART, the Oakland Airport connector to BART, they did a different system. It's a sort of an elevated cable car. And they originally were envisioning to have one stop in the middle, and they ended up not building that. But with that sort of technology, you can never add an intermediate stop. If you want to extend it, you need to build a new cable system. So you get off the one train, you get on the different train to go on, on the extension. So when we put out the RFP, we were very clear, we want an extensible system where you don't need to switch trains or switch vehicles if you want to get on an extension. And we're saying you have to connect the airport, Terminal B, and Diradon, but if you want to add intermediate stops, that's something we're going to be looking at as part of the, both the feasibility analysis and then when we should go into the environmental. We could have maybe a stop at San Jose Market or Guadalupe Gardens, connecting people to Columbus Park area. But, and we need to look at, like, what would that entail as footprint? What does it cost? How many more riders? Does it make sense to have those intermediate stops? So that's something that wasn't a requirement to have intermediate stops, but something we're going to investigate as we go through Phase One and Phase Two of the project.
Okay. I appreciate that. I'm just, and the reason I ask that question is I'm curious, it seems to be similar, maybe different technology, but similar type of idea. And I just get curious how effective that is and if, because I'm all for innovating and trying something new and failing fast, all the wonderful things that we say about the, you know, Silicon Valley, but I don't want to do it for the sake of doing it. I think it needs to be, there needs to be an absolute need there.
Yeah. So I think you're asking this underlying, what's driving this project, right? So we just updated the ridership study that undergirds this, right? Looked at how many employees would be using this, how many folks would be using this as passengers, and then even looking out at if, you know, when high-speed rail lands, what would that do, right? Because there's a lot of interesting inter-facility dynamics that come up there. Our estimates at the low end are about 5,000 per day, and at the high end are about 29,000 per day, riders that use this, right? And that has to do with whether there is the intra-airport option, meaning the inner facility piece, and whether high-speed rail, or those are the main kind of axes of change, In our estimation, this is definitely a system that needs this level of capacity and that there's demand for this, and it's going to grow a great deal when BART opens. All right? This will be the primary link, right? A major difference between Oakland and us has to do with location, right? Diradon is going to be the, one of the busiest transit places on the West Coast. Where the Oakland stop is, is a somewhat scary location where you have to transfer from one system, walk across a block and get onto it and then go down there. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of learnings we have got from Oakland. Oakland is kind of one of our punching bags as ideas go.
I understand. And I'm, being a Raider fan and Ace fan, I know it well. But, but, so I appreciate that. But I would just, she said, I'm sorry for that. But what I would, but what I would say, if only Vice Mayor Jones was here to defend me, but what I would just say is, when this comes back, you know, I'll still be on Council. So in those 12 months it comes back, you're going to have mostly the same, actually the same council members here. And so I just look forward to asking a lot of questions. I'm always very cautious about going down these different avenues of these new business lines, if you will, for lack of a better word, and making sure we're doing, making right decisions. And I always get concerned about, you know, I know some of these are premised that, you know, they're framed in such a way that we're just exploring, but I think at some point we get far enough down the road where it's more difficult to turn around. And I'm very cautious about getting so far down the road that it's easier to just plow ahead and keep pouring money into it than say, this isn't a good idea, let's stop. And so I'm okay hitting those brakes, and so you should expect a lot of scrutiny as this goes forward. Thank you.
Yeah, we encourage it, and we specifically set up a system that allows us to off-ramp in those places.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, it's a great point, and I'm very much looking forward to what staff and our partners come back with, assuming we move this forward. I think it's a great opportunity to learn, but I too have plenty of questions about the viability of this. So we're going to learn a lot, I think, assuming we move forward here. Okay. Last chance. Let's see any other hands. Let's vote. All right. Let's go learn more. Okay, we're on to item 7.1, Neighborhoods Commission Status Report, and we have a short staff presentation.
Good afternoon again. Andrea Flores Shelton with PRNS, Deputy Director. We are bringing forward a recommendation that actually was heard at the Neighborhood Services and Education Committee related to the Neighborhoods Commission. We brought this, our recommendation in March, and what we are bringing forward today is the committee's recommendation, which is to suspend the Neighborhood Commission. Thank you. We're going to the next slide. Thank you. So we have three recommendations for you today. One is to suspend the Neighborhoods Commission. We'll walk through the reasons why, but we want to also transition the Independent Citizen Oversight Committee to a standing committee of Parks Recreation Committee. That currently does report through the Neighborhoods Commission, and we believe we can still meet the requirements through a standing committee of Parks Recreation Commission. And then finally, one of the reasons why we are seeking to suspend the Neighborhoods Commission is that we want to work with our Neighborhood Association leaders, our Neighborhood leaders, to work on and co-design a model that really addresses the current needs and challenges that Neighborhood Association leaders are facing, co-design them, and come back to both the Neighborhood Conference in the fall and then to the, back to the Neighborhood Services and Education Committee to flush through what those possible solutions might Back in March, the department did bring a recommendation to sunset the commission, but again, in discussions with the committee, what is before you today is a recommendation to sunset. We do just, to suspend, to suspend. And the reason why we just do want to bring up those challenges is that the Neighborhood Commission, while it's been around for quite some time, it has had a very broad mission to meet sort of the quality of life issues specifically around public safety, code and transportation. And yes, it is in the Parks Recreation Neighborhood Services Department, but we have had a challenge with really maintaining quorum at these meetings. We've had high turnover for various reasons. One of them is the challenging caucus process, as well as we found that commissioners are having sort of some poor experiences on the commission due to sort of the commission quite not meeting their expectations. We've also had some situations where there's just a lack of participation and feedback loop with Neighborhood Associations and leaders, and we're finding that residents and commissioners want their real-time needs met at the commission, and that's really not the function of the commission. I just also want to go back to, we have over 200 Neighborhood Associations in this city, from Nine Project Hope neighborhoods to all of our Opportunity neighborhoods or formerly known as Gang Hot Spot neighborhoods that we think are a high priority. And then we have almost 190 Neighborhood Associations. So we have a variety of Neighborhood Associations with a variety of needs, and at this time, we feel that the Neighborhood Commission isn't quite meeting those underrepresented, under-served neighborhoods, and we'd like to understand how maybe a refined Neighborhood Commission model or other strategies could meet those needs. So if you were to move forward with suspending the Neighborhood Commission today, we would be really interested in working through a workgroup model kicking off in the April-May timeframe where we would be engaging Neighborhood leaders and really, again, identifying the problems and working on solutions together so that city staff isn't coming up with the solutions solely, but we would be doing that with Neighborhood leaders together. We'd bring, we'd be working on this co-design recommendation. We'd also need to update either the Muni Code and Policy 1-18 to ensure that the Independent Oversight Committee meets their requirements, so we could do that during the suspension time. We could move that over temporarily, and based on what the council direction is in the future, we can either revert back to some form of the Neighborhood Commission or it could remain with Parks and Recreation. So there's some flexibility there. And then finally, per the direction of the NSE Committee, we'd go to the Neighborhoods Conference, flush out this co-design model, and then come back to NSE with what these possible future solutions would look like, and then come back to Council in the spring. And I think I've talked a little bit about what the, again, the objectives of the workgroup. We want to increase access, communications, co-develop strategies that increase city department communications and engagement, and really want to weave in the city manager's customer service initiative into this. These are some of the challenges, you know, that we hear, is responsiveness, access, and there's been so much work done by the city manager's office. We think this is a real opportunity to figure out together how those are woven into our Neighborhood Engagement strategies. And then finally, as I said, increase outreach to diverse underrepresented Neighborhood groups and associations. And with that, we'll be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Andrea. Let's go to public comment.
Lawrence?
Hi. Larry Ames. I'm long-term...
Larry Ames, long-term community activist and was Neighborhoods Commissioner some years ago. I support Councilmember Batra's memo to reinstate the Neighborhoods Commission, to restart the caucus process to select their new commissioners. As I said in my letter to you, the Neighborhoods Commission was formed at the request of the community to help you and the council to work with us in the community on matters of like policies and programs that affect us in the community. The Neighborhoods Commission helps collect information from all across the city to provide feedback on things like the annual budget proposals, and it provides much-needed in-form public citizen oversight for the citizens' Measure B tax accounts. I also support the recommendations to explore neighborhood engagement and support the Neighborhood Engagement Model and also the United Neighborhoods, UNSCC, which in the past have provided great support for training and community involvement. So the UNSCC helps train the community, but the Neighborhoods Commission actually provides a formal input to the city council. So I hope you will support Councilmember Batra's memo. Thank you.
Danny Garza. Danny Garza is here in person, and then I'll go back to the virtual speakers.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and City Council. This is a, this is a good day. I came here to praise Angel, but first, before I do that, let me just join this conversation. Yeah, the Neighborhood Commissions right now, they're sorely lacking. I had, I had asked Carrasco to appoint me when Mimi left for District 5, and of course, it never happened. We never got anything back. But, but this, this is, this is a great idea. This can't be all talk, though. This has to be super-inclusive because it's too important to the neighborhoods, and we all know that. With that, I'd like to offer Plata Rojo as a first neighborhood association to be joined with this. I want to tell you now about Angel Rios and everything he's done for us. I mean, you guys know what a great, great job he's doing with the city, but, but Plata Rojo Park is what it is today, with the beauty and everything else there, and the idea's coming because of Angel. I want to thank you. So I appreciate it.
Blair, followed by Olivia.
Hi. What have you been here? A previous public commenter was hopeful, and that was nice to hear. It's nice to hear that, you know, his adept to this subject I do not have. For me, I'm kind of hurt that this has happened. I understand what's been going on with the Neighborhood Commission, but it always hurts to lose such an important commission, basically. And I, I just hope we can find ways to get it together for the commission process in our future. I hope the Neighborhood Commission can look to what Measure T is doing, what housing does, what, what Community Energy does. I think all the people in those commissions feel oftentimes kind of useless compared to city government staff. And even, even Mayor Mahan, when he was on Community Energy, used to offer such claims and say things like, you know, I can't wait to do something more important with life, you know? And he's really made headway with that. And I hope that he can return to the commission process and really bring out what it can really offer the community as a process for everyday community, as something fairly awesome. And, you know, so, you know, you may not be getting the same, you're just repeating the knowledge of city government staff at this point, but how do we really learn for this commission process to be a facilitator for the public and make it, make it that part of a, of a community work process that I think is really vitally important for our future and that we used to do and that for some reason we've run into a snag and that I hope we're trying to address? And it's just a good place to talk and communicate and develop. Good luck how to do that stuff. Thanks.
Olivia, followed by Gary.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Olivia Navarro, and I'm a resident of District 6, and I'm also the District 6 Neighborhood Commissioner. Today I come before you in support of keeping the Neighborhood Commission alive. I'm saddened to let you know that unfortunately I have yet to even get a phone call from staff advising me about this happening. The Neighborhood Commission is a great resource to our neighborhoods, and it's in the council. Sadly, COVID has taken so much from our community, and this commission has felt the hit. I ask you to not sunset this commission as it's unique because it is selected by the community rather than by the city, giving it the ability to express concerns as it reflects the neighborhoods and not what the current council makeup is. The Neighborhoods Commission helps the community to work together with the city. This commission has made numerous recommendations regarding the four areas of responsibilities as defined by the city ordinance. The commission's focus is not, it's focused and not limited to areas of code enforcement, transportation, safety, and budget recommendations. It has assigned commissioners upon request from the city to participate on interview boards for the department heads, participate in emergency services council, and have two commissioners participate as a member of the reimagining Public Safety Committee along with its being tasked as the Oversight Committee to the Measure B quarter cent tax. In short, we are a great asset that can help by working with the public, collecting and evaluating our input, and then forwarding alternatives and recommendations to you and the council for decisions. Therefore, I respectfully ask you to keep the Neighborhood Commission and our neighborhoods come together and move the city together forward. Please support the Neighborhood Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Gary Cunningham, former chair of the Neighborhood Commission, also chair of the Measure B Oversight Committee. I support Councilmember Batra's recommendation as well as Councilmember Doan's recommendations as well. Fortunately, both the Neighborhood Commission and the Oversight Committee have documented what our accomplishments have been over the years, and they're on the, available on the San Jose website. The recommendation by NSE does not recognize these accomplishments, and that's unfortunate. So hopefully, going forward, the recommendations by both council members will be considered by the council and implemented. Thank you.
Back to the capo. David just put his hand up.
Good afternoon. David Heindl, Chair of the District 10 Leadership Coalition and a founding member of the All-District Leadership Group. There have been preliminary conversations about the future of the Neighborhoods Commission by the remaining members of the commission as well as the United Neighborhoods of Santa Clara County and the All-District Leadership Group. I believe these three groups should take a role in crafting any changes to the Neighborhoods Commission, and this will be best accomplished by filling all positions on the Neighborhood Commission and moving forward with the community engagement process after that is completed. Therefore, we are supporting, the District 10 Leadership Coalition is supporting the proposal by, and Councilmember Batra's memo, as well as it reflects Councilmember Doan's. Thank you.
Back to council. Oh, sorry. Another hand went up. OK, I'm going to go back to council.
Great. Thank you. Let's go to Councilmember Foley.
Thank you. I didn't expect to be first on this, on this discussion. Thank you for the presentation. I have had some very active neighborhood commissioners in my district and used to hold bimonthly meetings with them in person and then Zoom. So I have a lot of information and background from my neighborhood commissioners. And initially, I was opposed to sunsetting the Neighborhood Commission and reformatting. But as I've taken a look at it, and I've heard about the caucus format, which, which to me doesn't seem to be functioning properly because the people selected at the caucus, it's more of a popularity contest than a commitment to perform their duties as commissioner. I can't speak for all the commissioners. I don't know how they're, I know the caucus formula does not work. The formula that does work is for the council office to appoint, because then we are sitting down with the people who are the neighborhood commissioners, who are going to represent our, our neighborhood associations and getting their commitment to, number one, attend the meetings, number two, meet with me and offer feedback to me about what's happening in the commissions so that I then know what, what my neighborhood associations are doing or what they need from us and how we can work together, both the city, the commission, and my neighborhood associations. I have a lot of fairly active neighborhood associations, and so it, it concerns me, the caucus formula that has been previous, and I am hoping that's not what is brought back to us for the selection, because in, in my particular district, it might heavily favor one side of the district over the other, because one side of my district is where all, the majority of the active neighborhood associations are. I have other neighborhood associations, but they're not as active. They don't participate as much. Ironically, a couple of my neighborhood commissioners are from the other side of the district, but they represent the whole district well. So I'm supportive of where you're going. I am concerned about being able to establish a quorum going forward, both with the standing committee and then with a future committee. All of our, or many of our commissions seem to be having issues meeting quorum. The senior commission couldn't meet quorum this year, this time. Vision Zero, which is a task force, may not meet quorum, so we may not be able to meet. It's frustrating to have all these volunteers who are interested in participating, but they can't meet quorum, and they're, and we can't even have a presentation without it. So I'm wondering how that part of it will be resolved? How are we going to modify quorum? Or what are we going to do to make sure that the people we get are, number one, committed to the role that they've asked to be appointed to, if, if the appointment is where it goes? And how are they, we're going to make sure they fulfill their commitment? Because we need that representation as council members. We need that Neighborhood Commission to be the eyes and ears of what's happening in the other districts and what's, what their concerns are. And across the board, the issues in every district are very similar. We approach them differently potentially as council members, but the issues are all very, very similar. So how, how do you feel the neighborhood engagement model will go forward? And how will you get commitments from those participating to make quorum and attend the meetings and participate?
Thank you, Councilmember. I think those are great observations and questions. You know, that's the difficulty of working with people who are volunteering their time. And I think there was a conversation not long ago about things like stipends and such to continue to keep people engaged or make it easier for them to, to attend. So I think on some of the questions, the sort of how do you find or identify these people that'll make this commitment, we would expect to try to answer through this process, right? And so that's certainly an area we can focus on with everyone and say, well, what does, what does make you want to make this commitment, right? And what kind of a person is that, or who do you want to represent ourselves? To the, to the process question, I'll hand it over to Andrea for a minute about sort of how we plan to move forward over these next several months while we work through important questions like the ones you're asking.
Thank you, Councilmember. I agree with, with John very much on sort of this, these are exactly the questions we want to dive deeper. So we, through this workgroup, that's sort of the formal engagement process where we would like to work with. We know many of the council offices are interested in making sure that some of their neighborhood leaders are represented on it. So we would have a sort of a formal workgroup where we would kind of talk through, again, identifying what are all the issues and challenges with engaging with the city, right? Before we jump to solutioning, right? We want to really get it all out there so that we have the different challenges that need to be addressed, the issues, right? Because that's the other piece with the Neighborhood Commission. It's been sort of flooded with different issues that are hard to address, all of those, right? So issues, whether it's customer service challenges and/or we think about just the BSJ grants, improvement process, there's a whole host of sort of PRNS issues, citywide interdepartmental issues, customer service issues, and then, you know, talking through maybe how we would address policy issues, right? So those are some of the topics. But then we would also want to informally figure out how we can engage, and Olympia and her team, as well as other departments, have connections with sort of the unofficial neighborhood leaders, right? They may not be in an official neighborhood association. So we want to do some engagement, kind of that high-touch, in-person kind of conversations. And I think we also want to do some tech surveys with residents, whether it's through Nextdoor, you know, why is it that you don't? Again, back to asking questions about engagement with the city. What's the best way to engage? So again, we don't want to be redundant to what a lot of the work that the CMO has done with the customer service work. So we're working closely with Eric Jensen, Dolan Beckel, to make sure that we're not being redundant, but that we're sort of taking it to a different level. And so it's both a formal process and informal process. And then we really do think that the Neighborhood Conference will be that place where we can kind of finalize what we've heard, flush out those recommendations, and then bring something back to committee. I hope that helps.
And if I can add, in case it's not clear, you know, our expectation is to engage every single council office in this process as well.
That, I was going to encourage that. But I was also going to encourage you to include the current commissioners in the discussion, and I'd like to volunteer for him, Brad Luce, who was one of my commissioners, and he's very interested in this issue. He doesn't know that I'm nominating him to participate, but I think the perspective of those who've been involved would be helpful in crafting what could be successful going forward. I'm also mindful, though, of Olympia and how much work Olympia does, and wondering if, Olympia, you're fabulous, but I'm not sure how you can continue taking on this and everything else you do. And if it was me, I couldn't do it effectively. You do a marvelous job, but at what point do you say, or do they say, can you handle this, or do we need someone else to do it? Because I'm very aware of how much work you do.
She pay you? We're very mindful of that. And I think, again, back to jumping to solutions, right? We're kind of looking at low cost, no cost, but we've heard loud and clear from council offices and other folks, what's the staffing model that would support, again, these proposed solutions? So we're very mindful of sort of capacity to, to be responsive and to maintain a commission and/or some of these other engagement models we might be coming up with.
Great. Thank you. I have just less than a minute, but I have, since you brought up beautify S J grants, a lot of our neighborhood associations are wondering and about their grants. And I know there was Ken Podgorcik passed away suddenly, and unfortunately, that affected United Neighborhoods and all of that. So Olympia, can you give us an update so we can tell our neighborhood associations?
Definitely. Many of those neighborhood associations have reached out to me. We're working closely with our PRNS contracts unit, and we're hoping to communicate with our neighborhood groups in the next couple of weeks and get the dollars out to people within the next six to eight weeks.
OK. Thank you. I appreciate that. With that, I yield my time.
All seven.
All 10 seconds.
Yeah, I was going to say all seven seconds of it. Thank you, Councilmember. Good, good questions and comments. Councilmember Davis?
Thank you, Mayor. I, first of all, I want to thank you, John, Andrea, and Olympia, for this discussion, for all your work on this issue, and for the discussion at NSE in March. I think we got, we worked out a good compromise in committee, taking a pause to reassess, not sunsetting. So I want to be really clear to everyone who commented, we are not sunsetting the commission. We're just taking a pause, and really, it was on pause anyway, as we discussed in March, because there aren't even enough appointments for, for quorum at this point. So they can't continue meeting. But we also, in committee, expressed a lot of hesitancy to, to make any unilateral decisions without engaging the neighborhood associations and also, and I think you're already going to do this, not just the current members of, of the commission. to do this, not just the current members of the commission, but also former commissioners, because we don't have a lot of commissioners right now, and there are some that rolled off, the commissioner turned out of the commission that are still, who are still around and available and definitely want to be involved. I know because I've heard from some of them. And I do want to just say, I think we're going to, we still need a neighborhood services commission. I'm the liaison to the Parks and Recreation Commission, and their agendas are full and their meetings are long, and they're focused really just on the parks and recreation specific issues. So we do need to be discussing those quality of life issues that are recurring in our neighborhoods. And we just want to be realistic about what has and hasn't worked in the current iteration of the commission, the Neighborhood Services Commission. And so I really appreciate the plan for engagement that you've laid out, Andrea. I think that's a really good plan and comprehensive so that we're going deep with the neighborhood associations and the maybe unofficial neighborhood leaders, and then going broad with surveys. I think that really makes a lot of sense. So with that, I just want to move the Neighborhood Services and Education Committee recommendations.
A second.
Do we have a second, Councilwoman Cohen? Thank you. Okay, I don't see any other hands. Oh, Councilwoman Cohen, go ahead.
I just wanted to make a couple of brief comments. I have been a fan of the Neighborhoods Commission, and I know that there's an expectation of certain action that can come out of that commission, but I also think that the cross-district discussions are valuable in themselves. So I just want to sort of leave that out there, that, you know, even if, even if some of the purposes might need to change, some of the mission might need to change, I know that I've heard from commissioners who say, just hearing what's going on in this other district and knowing the similarities and differences between what's going on is useful. And then they can come back and talk to council members and other people in the neighborhoods about it. So just think about what, you know, what should be the real purpose of this gathering of people? And I also want to point out that there are districts that are not as well-equipped for this caucus method, and that's part of the problem. You know, in District Four, we've just appointed them as council members. We don't have, we have three neighborhood associations in all of District Four. There is no critical mass for a caucus, so this process has to be, we have to be aware of the differences across the city. There might be some very mature districts where it makes sense for the council member to utilize this caucus to sort of bring people forward as good choices. That doesn't work in every, in every district, so I just want to keep that on the forefront.
Thanks, councilmember. Okay, Councilmember Batra.
Every commission can have issues. When you take the community wants to help, and we try to tell them that they have not been effective, and we want to have started with a sunset, now we are saying a pause, it doesn't reflect well on the people who were speaking today. I've been a commissioner on Measure T myself, and I, we had troubles, but during our time on this, during the pandemic, we were able to do the Zoom meetings, and we were able to get the quorum, sometimes with difficulty. I'm not sure whether you utilized the Zoom methodology to get that. Plus, we had to modify one thing in the Measure T, where we went by, the quorum was, and with the legal approval, that the quorum was complete with the, based on the number of filled seats, not based on the designated number of seats. Like on Measure T, there were 15. In this one, you probably have 20. So it made it, with the approval of the legal, that it was okay to consider a quorum based on the number of filled seats, and that made life a little easier. I think I'm okay with trying to reconstitute the thing. We used the appointment method to get the Measure T people, and they were very dedicated. They worked hard on it. You have some of the same people or similar people on the neighborhood commission. I think we could have easily changed this thing to be an appointment method by the council, just like we have done it with the others, one member from each district, and then one citywide, because we had on the Measure T the same thing. And it could probably give us a lot, lot of input. The comment which you made, that people have a real-time expectation which the commission cannot meet, that's a matter of educating the people. What is the role of that commission? It is not a matter of if people have wrong expectation, that we say that that commission is not to be kept around. So I'm disappointed that we are going with this recommendation, and I think we are, I personally believe it's a disservice that we are not acknowledging the great work this commission and some of the members who have done it. And we are saying that, hey, this commission was not effective, so we need to go and study for several months and come back with an approach. I would support that motion to go, but I'm expressing that I don't think we have done a good service to the people who have served on this commission or the people who started this commission. It's not a good message, and that's what I would have to say on that. I will support the recommendation, which is on the table, and please note that it's not with a lot of pleasure. Okay?
Councilmember, if I may address that, because I think you brought up a really important issue, and I want to make sure we're being very clear. We have a focus, a scope, and a structure issue that we need to fix. The leaders, the remaining leaders that are on the commission, we can't speak any higher for the Jim Carters, the Larry Ames, and we have a lot of respect. In fact, our hope is to keep them engaged in this process because we need their leadership. So thanks for raising this, because it's important for us to acknowledge publicly, this is not about the leaders, the people that remain. If anything, they've stayed on board to kind of keep things going, right? And we give them full credit for that, and we hope that they stay engaged with us. But we do need to fix the systemic structural issue. We got to get greater focus, we got to fix the structure. This caucus process, it was kind of a stayover from the previous SNI days that was supported by a pretty robust SNI staffing, which no longer exists. That's become problematic. And of course, you've heard several comments about the caucus process itself, which kind of has a, it's just not working, right? So thanks for raising the concern, but we do want to acknowledge that this is a structure issue. This does not speak to the people that remain on this commission, because we have a high respect for them.
Yeah, I really appreciate that clarification. And I do agree with the caucus method is being used only on this commission. All the other ones you are appointing, we are appointing through the council, and I think bringing that consistency will not hurt. It will be a good thing to do, because council members always appoint, or they are nominated by the council member and then appointed through the regular process. And I'll be totally supportive of that one, and this commission will benefit from that one as well. Okay? So it was a question about is, yes, you needed to fix some things to make it more effective, and are we doing it with the best communication possible is really my concern here. Okay?
Great. Thank you, councilmember. Okay, let's see any other hands? Have a motion on the floor? Would you want to speak, councilmember? Please.
Yeah, I'm just trying to wrap my head around exactly. I mean, I read the staff report and see the presentation, obviously. And so, so I just want to say this out loud, just to make sure I understand it. So per the, sort of the restructured timeline, and then also what happened in the, in NSC. So originally, the memo from staff was to sunset the Neighborhoods Commission. In my mind, that means end it. It's just, it's done. We're not going to do anything. Let's see. But it seems to me in that original memo, John, I think your name's on it, but, you know, from February 2023, that one was still recommending bringing back this sort of other model, right? So now NSC heard it, the folks on the committee heard it, and what came from that is not to sunset, but suspend, right? That was the change that occurred? But everything else seems to be the same?
For the most part. Councilmember Doan had some items that should be in with the documents that he had listed that he wanted to make sure we were looking at through the process. The reason we changed is largely because we were never trying to eliminate this function in the city. We were just saying, it's not working in the way it should, and we want to redesign. So our initial was, well, let's set that aside and do something new. And maybe it looks very similar to what we have. We don't know. But a lot of people were just getting stuck on, you're getting rid of it, you're getting rid of it. And that's really not what we're trying to do. We're trying to evolve it in some way that works better in all the ways we've talked about. So that's really what we're after here, and that's why we got to, oh, well, then it makes more sense, let's just suspend it. And if the form comes out different through that process that everybody is agreeable to, then we'll bring that recommendation forward to you. If the form comes out, do it the exact same way, then we would bring that to you as well.
Okay, is that going to go, that is going to go to NSC before it comes to us, right?
It would.
And so, yeah, I appreciate just what you just said, because I think folks are continuing to want to have a place to stay engaged, right? I know it's one of many ways for folks to be engaged, and I think that's what they desire. And so I appreciate you saying that it may in fact remain the same or be slightly similar. Okay, I think I'm generally supportive of it. I think my sense and what I was hearing from my constituents and some of the folks that I think District Two Leadership Council sent a letter in, but they were, that's what the concern was, where they're trying to do away with us. They're trying, and so, and so from now until this comes forward before the committee, a lot of that backend work is going to be happening, the group. And so the Neighborhoods Commission is not meeting, and I don't even think they have quorum today if they, if they wanted to meet, right? That doesn't even exist. Okay, all right. All right, those are all my questions for now, so thank you.
Councilmember Kandellis.
Thank you. Yeah, I wanted to thank staff for their presentation, for their comments. You know, just to reiterate some concerns from the community, because I did meet with some of the current Neighborhoods Commissioner or former Neighborhood Commissioners, and you know, we are not, we're not saying by any means, oh, no, this is the end of the Neighborhoods Commission. And I'm reiterating that we're going back to the drawing board, because we currently don't even meet quorum because of the four members or so. So I just want to make that clear, and, you know, I look forward to hearing the update on how we're going to be innovative in our approach to engage neighborhoods. And like Councilmember Cohen, District Eight, you know, we have, we have our troubles with some neighborhood associations who are inactive, some who are more active than others. So revamping and innovating that model is the approach that we took in NSC. And by no, no way are we saying, no, no, we're getting rid of this. We're just saying, hey, pause, we're going to make it better, and then we're going to come back to engage. And like Angel said, I look forward to making sure that the current and former commissioners are involved, because a lot of them feel a sense of, you know, connection to it, rightfully so. So I implore staff to engage them, and even to those folks who weren't engaged. I know there was somebody who called in and said, hey, you know, I haven't got a call? Let's call everybody and see how they can be engaged in this process. And yeah, so with that, thank you.
And if I can comment real quick on that, not only are we going to ask that you and or your staff engage in this process, but to the degree that people contact you and they're worried about it, you know, as we're getting these dates, push them to us, push them to us, so that we'll, we want everybody who wants to be involved with this to have a voice, from former to current members to anyone else, really. You know, we're just trying to come up with the best way to hear the voice of the neighborhoods in City Hall.
Appreciate that, John. Yeah, we definitely will, and count on us to filter folks your way as well.
All right, it's going to be back better than ever. Let's vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Excellent, thanks, Tony. All right. Thank you to staff. We're on to item 7.2, actions related to the Urban Confluence Silicon Valley Breeze of Innovation Project.
Thank you, mayor. And Steve Borkenhagen, executive director, is on his way down. Will do a quick presentation. But I wouldn't be a good Parks and Rec Director if I didn't take this moment to talk about some fun. This Sunday, Viva Kai SJ is back this spring through downtown, six miles of open streets. I look forward to seeing all of you out there, getting fresh air and good exercise.
Awesome, thanks for the PSA. See everybody out there. All right, so we're passing it over to Steve?
Yes, so Steve Borkenhagen, executive director for the Light Tower Corporation. We're going to run through a few slides.
Thank you, John, and thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Steve Borkenhagen. Steve Borkenhagen, executive director, Urban Confluence Silicon Valley. Thank you for having us today. We're hoping today that you will vote to accept this staff report to allow us to study Plaza de Cesar Chavez, to do a robust outreach process, and to accept a schedule that we will work on for our outreach with John Sisrilli and his staff. We made the decision about a year ago that Arena Green was fraught with many challenges, mostly related to environmental challenges. We had always wanted to be at Plaza de Cesar Chavez, so after lots of conversation with many of you and John and his staff and our board, we made the decision to move toward studying Plaza de Cesar Chavez, and that got us to where we are here today. I know I've had meetings with all of you explaining our logic. Of course, I'll be here to answer questions, but we just think Plaza de Cesar Chavez is the most important urban park in our city, really a gem in the rough, and that with lots of collaboration with other stakeholders in the city, we can really make a spectacular park there and properly honor Cesar Chavez after all these years. Our design team continues to work. We've had a great deal of past city engagement. We will have future city engagement. We've met with many stakeholders already. I would say the vast majority of people we've talked to are really excited to work together at Plaza de Cesar Chavez and add a number of elements that will improve it I already explained what today's action is. Here it is again. And so I'm here to answer questions, and I hope you will all vote to allow us to simply go study the park and do the outreach that you've been asking us to do for a few years that we are now ready to do. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. John, anything else before we go to public comment?
No, thank you, the mayor.
Okay, great, thank you. Let's go to public comment.
Dan Orloff. And Dan will be followed by Nate on Zoom.
Hello, mayor, members of the city council. I've spent 45 years celebrating the San Jose condition, whether it was as a commercial broker in downtown San Jose, San Jose's marketing officer under Mayor McHenry, and Susan Hammer, a member of our Rotary Club downtown, the committee that brought the arena here. I'm also on the board of San Jose Fountain Blues and Brew's foundation and festival, and we're bringing it back here for the 40th year. Your predecessors set this day up perfectly with a $1.5 billion investment in redevelopment to stimulate the private sector and have them start to take over. This project that staff's recommending be studied is consistent with what the city can do to be great, and I would encourage you to support it and every effort that they want to undertake to involve our great community. Thank you.
Nate, followed by Blair. I'm actually, let me, and before we go to Nate, let me go to Dan. And then Nate will come next.
Hi, I'm Dan Polkranow, I'm a District Three resident, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the Plaza Conservancy, which is right now a loose coalition of event producers and people who love Plaza de Cesar Chavez. We're very excited about the possibilities. I'd like to thank all of you who signed a memo placing focus on the park. And I think now, excuse me, we need to bring everybody together, get everyone around the table, and come back to the city with a plan that takes into account all the interests of the people who want to activate this park. And we're getting ready to appoint a board, and we welcome any input from PRNS and other participants in the park about how we can make this a park for everyone. Thank you. I'm here to answer any questions if anybody has any.
Okay, Nate, followed by Blair.
Good afternoon, mayor, council, staff. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on this important issue. My name is Nate LeBlanc. I'm the business development manager of the San Jose Downtown Association, and speaking today on behalf of the association, I guess I'm just not in the rhythm of showing up in purpose, in person. I feel like I should be in the room, but... I feel like I should be in the room, but want to use this time wisely, so I'll keep going. We support this project. We've supported it since the beginning, and I can see no valid reason why permission shouldn't be granted to study another site. But I think that the team from Urban Confluence has been consistent in moving towards this for several years now, and that I hope you'll grant them the permission to explore this other site. And I know that we all want to see a world-class monument here in San Jose at some point, and here we have a team working toward that goal very diligently every day, doing the right things, doing the community outreach. So the Downtown Association supports this, and we thank you for your time.
Blair, followed by Patron Paul.
Hi, thank you. Blair Bequen here. If I heard correctly, the previous speaker and from the original presentation, there is the option to be looking for another site for this item. The memo and the list that I read said that you just want to work out exploratory, to continue this exploratory ideas for being at Caesar Chavez Park. And I just don't think that's going to be really viable. I think you're going to spend a lot of money and come up with a big nothing, because I think it's going to be really rejected in the future. And I think it would be wiser to spend money on finding alternative sites, which I think is possibly what's being said here today. I hope that can be explored, and it should be an option added to this memo, I feel, to really consider alternative sites. And I'm just really, really uncomfortable with this project and what it would do to the future of the area. You've talked about it as a gift, and if they want to be decent about giving a gift to the community, they should be decent enough to want to hear some pretty strong community voices that are asking this kind of project to be placed somewhere else, like possibly at the end of South First, where it's a more artisan area, and it's an area, you know, that can be more experimental. This is a design of totally Northern European ideals, that it looks like a bay project that's totally windswept, and it's huge, it's a monster. And I just, it just takes over, dominates the whole area with a Northern European philosophy of bay and wind and cold, that this area was built on warmth. You know, the Caesar Chavez area and the San Pedro Market area, it's an area of warmth, and you're turning it into a place of coldness. We have to really think about this issue.
Patron Paul. And then we'll go back to the Zoom speakers. Lawrence will follow.
Dear Mayor and esteemed Councilmembers, I'm Patrolman Paul, a proud member of San Jose Community and a vendor organizer and projection mapping specialist at SJ Storyboard. With nearly two decades of residency in the city, I have personally witnessed the tremendous growth and potential of the city. Amazing things take time, a lot of thought, a lot of love, and a lot of sacrifice. I'm here to urge you to support the Breeze of Innovation Project, a visionary undertaking that has the power to elevate San Jose to global center of creativity and innovation. A lot of passionate people who love this city talk about this, taking this necessary steps to make this into a global landmark, a more vibrant city. Well, here is that project. Understand the need for iconic landmark that captures the spirit of the city and serves as a source of inspiration, connection for the community. The Breeze of Innovation Project offers that precisely that, a stunning immersive storytelling platform, a blank canvas that can be used by local artists, musicians, historians, event organizers, and digital media visionaries to showcase a diverse and vibrant mosaic of our community that matches with the nuance and vibrations of the city. And a future city, San Jose, will be built around it. With the power of projection mapping technology onto this towering landmark, we can create a breathtaking visual experience that transcends time and space, bending reality and transporting audiences to new dimensions of imagination. To be honest, creating global landmarks of this magnitude is a scary endeavor. The tragedy of being a visionary is a lot of times you will not see the fruits of your labor and sacrifices made in your lifetime. But standing here in San Jose, we look back and give homage to the people of the past that sacrifices that they have made, and we are in the present, ready to take on the chance, ready to make this amazing historical landmark happen, and with the people from the future looking back on us.
Thank you. Larry Ames, followed by Dave.
Yes, hi, Larry Ames. This time I'm speaking as Chair of the District Six Neighborhood Leadership Group. We've written and spoken to you for a number of times over the years, but since this is a new council, I get to say it over again. Just say, thanks, but no thanks. It's an honor to be offered this gift, but it comes at a considerable cost, both in land and in money. Trying to put it at Caesar Chavez Park, it's a, it's a very heart of the city. It is well-loved and well-used. And in fact, they're trying to figure out how to handle more people at the various events that come there, the Christmas in the Park, the Jazz Festival in the summer. If you lose, if you dedicate too much of that land for this, this structure, you impact these other things. So you need to do an environment, a cost estimate to see, would this new thing bring enough people to make up for the loss of all the other uses there? There's financial implications to this thing also. Where's the money for this thing coming from? If you take money for this thing, it's money that could not be used for other things and other venues that might be more beneficial for the community. There's also the cost of maintenance and the cost of demolition when it's at the end of its lifetime. I mean, you don't just build an icon and have it become an icon. Los Angeles has the Hollywood sign. That was not built as something, or it doesn't have to be a big fancy thing. City Hall is our nice icon right now, so it just seems like a, just kind of a waste, and it'll impact such negative impacts to Caesar Chavez Plaza. So I just urge you to say, thank you, but no thank you. Thanks.
Dave, followed by Paul. Dave Peterson. Okay, I'm going to move on to Paul. Oh, go ahead.
Sorry, how about now?
Yes, got you.
My apologies. Dave Peterson here, California Sports Center. I'm actually hoping you could accept the staff report and recommendations to allow the creation of a memorable landmark that everyone around the city, the state, and particularly the world could enjoy, because this will become something that people enjoy and literally visit San Jose as a part of our city, as a part of the local organizing committee to the Olympic Trials for Gymnastics in 2012, 2016, and the upcoming U.S. Championships this August. I constantly talk about things that people can do when they visit this town of ours, having been all over this country to various cities where those events have also been hosted. And I find myself enjoying their various centers of city and things like the St. Louis Arch in New York and so many other wonderful places. Well, this would be something people would remember. It's a part of the core. It's exactly what creates city vibrancy, and this would just be an amazing project, with all due respect to all of the community around San Jose, and it would create new vibrancy. Certainly wouldn't take away from anything, as I've enjoyed the San Jose Jazz Festival and Christmas in the Park, and all due respect to previous speakers and perhaps those after. Fact of the matter is, this would be a great addition to San Jose. We need this type of project, and bless all of those who are behind it to make it happen. I look forward to seeing it and being a part of it. Thank you very much.
Paul Linum.
Hello, it's Paul Linum from Lick Observatory, University of California on Mount Hamilton. A local resident reached out to me about this project in recent weeks. We did review the lighting philosophies with concerns about light pollution back in about 2021. At that time, the documents presenting the lighting philosophies were dated around about April 2019. At the time of our review, we found, although it was mildly inadequate, because the review was done on a rainy Valentine's night, there were a lot of reassuring statements, both in the written documents and in the live presentation in 2021. So we are cautiously lukewarm about this project because of the assurances that we're given, and we would appeal for the council and the proponents of this project to be consistent with the lighting philosophies they've outlined and keep their promises. Thank you very much.
Back to council.
Thank you. All right, let's go to Councilmember Foley first.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I've followed Urban Confluence since its beginning. I think I was on council when we voted to accept Arena Green as a proposal of the three different sites that were chosen. And I truly am a huge believer in public art and in what it can do to draw people to the city of San Jose, to attract people, to keep them here, to spend money, to, it's the creativity and vibrancy that comes with public art, the culture, the value, everything that comes from this type of creativity is what the Breeze of Innovation is all about. And while some people may object to the breeze, I know there was a tremendous amount of applications that you received and narrowed it down to three, and then this one in the big unveiling a couple of years ago. So I'm actually really excited to see the new location. You know, public art, you can't just put a piece of public art out there and say, this is going to be attractive, this is going to be wonderful, and the community and have the community accept it right away. I'm thinking in part of the Eiffel Tower. When the Eiffel Tower was built, it was not accepted by the community. But now it is an icon, and has been for hundreds of years at least, an icon in the city of Paris, and people flock from all over the world just to see the Eiffel Tower. That would be a wonderful dream, isn't it, to have something that people would flock to the city of San Jose to see, to be here as vacationers, as conventioners, spending their money to visit and see this beautiful icon? So I am in tremendous support of this, and I'm in tremendous support of the Plaza de Caesar Chavez. I think that's a good location for it. It's the center of the city. I realize that that particular park may have some difficulties, but I think every issue, every place we go will have some issues of where to put Breeze of Innovation and have it accessible to all. This is centrally located. The park is utilized for a lot of different events, Christmas in the Park being one, the Jazz Festival, Pride, a lot of activities meet in Caesar Chavez Park. So it would be nice to have something that they could look at, that people could look and experience and be involved around while they're listening to music and participating in those events. So with that, I am going to move my memo that I co-authored with the mayor, and also I will move the memo of Councilmember Torres, Jimenez, Cohen, and Candelas.
Second.
Thank you. Both of these memos really work together. They're, they're very similar in context, so I feel they are not contrary to either's. Does, do, Steve, do you have any concerns about the memos, or John?
Thank you, Councilmember. A little bit, you know, I know that there is, for example, in the memo you co-authored with the mayor, direction to prioritize exploring. I think some clarification around that would be helpful. In a way reads, we would prioritize this project over other projects in the city, but I think what is meant is prioritize the items A, B, and C as part of this project.
That's correct.
Okay.
It's not our intention to prioritize this over any other park, Happy Hollow, the Japanese Friendship Gardens, anything else that may need you to be looking at and considering what we may need to be funding. No, so thank you for asking that clarified question.
Yeah, thank you. And then, and then with the issue of the master plan, it's generally not my preference to start with the master plan. This, the last time we were in front of council, we got a pretty broad direction on a bunch of outreach we needed to do at Arena Green. We never got around to doing that for a variety of reasons that we've talked about. And when you listen, for example, to the public comments, you'll see that they're on both sides. Some are like, really no, and some are like, really yes, right? I think part of the reason we still see that in the community is because we haven't done community outreach around this. We've not explained a lot of the details. When you listen to some of the speakers, it's clear that they don't have a complete understanding of what we're trying to do. You know, for example, this project wouldn't intend to involve no city money. This project is unusual in that in PRNS, it is, I can't even think of a time yet where we've, we've helped manage or guide a private project. We're typically using public dollars to do that, and we go through our regular processes for that. So, for example, in a master plan, it's likely that Urban Confluence would either engage a consultant or perhaps this new conservancy that's trying to form to help sort of guide that along and work through the master plan. But my concern, my biggest concern probably is that when I look at these memos, and we're talking about great things, right? Stages and the arts and Christmas in the Park. And I think what we're going to see is when we start with this community outreach, all of those groups, including the Downtown Businesses District, who's been, who's been talking to me for years about improvements in Caesar Chavez, are going to say, oh, let's do that, too, and let's do that, too, and let's do that, too, and let's do that, too. And suddenly, an already very expensive project just becomes that much more expensive. And it's not clear to me if the expectation is, well, Urban Confluence does the art and the icon, and is it the city then that does, for example, a performance pavilion for the arts groups, or does something for Christmas in the park, or has to move the fountain, or things like that? So none of that has been sorted out. And, and for me, I would, I would like a more cohesive community connection on, here's what we see as feasible. Because I think if we start adding all this stuff in, it probably starts to get into the infeasible area. And then what are we using our time to do? So my preference is to do the broader community outreach, then come back and say, this is what we heard, here's the elements that we all think make sense, and we'll go in here, and that the project could afford to do, right? That would be a realistic fundraising sort of goals versus just jump into the master plan, do all this, which includes SEQA, and, you know, and all that stuff, which are very complicated, long, expensive processes. And I can understand why some might want to get moving on that. We've been delayed for about two years. We were definitely well behind where either of us would have thought we would have been today, that's for sure. And there's reasons for that. It's nobody's real fault, but here we are. So that component of that broader outreach and consensus has not happened. And we continue, when we get into public meetings, to hear both sides, some very, very yes, and some very much no. And so my preference is to wait on the master plan and do the community outreach and build the consensus, but, you know, I'm subject to council's direction. And then I don't know if Steve wanted to comment.
I share John's concerns. Just to remind you, today is only an approval for us to do Breeze of Innovation-specific outreach. That's what the memo says. The two blue memos have nuances and are a little bit less clear, but we simply want to go do Breeze of Innovation-specific outreach and come back to you with what the community has to say to us, because our goal is to collaborate with everyone in the community, with neighbors of the park, users of the park, users, citizens who go to the park once a year, and everyone else. So I think we are being, with John's help, good citizens and wanting to do this the right way, and listen to what the community has to say, and then we'll come back to you with those results. And the issue about the park governance and the master plan are really separate issues, which I think all of us who care about the park want to advance those things at the same time, too, with the premise being that nothing significant at the park can probably happen without a master plan. So I would defer to John as an expert in that area, but I'm hoping that a park master plan and park outreach, as opposed to Breeze of Innovation-specific outreach, can happen in a timely way also. But just a reminder, the, the original memo that John wrote is just about allowing us to study the park and go do Breeze-specific outreach, which we intend to do posthaste if you approve it today.
Thank you, and I appreciate that. The, the master plan wasn't in my memo, so I can't address specifically what the thought was behind that, but, so I'll let Councilmember Cohen or one of the others when they have their time. But under, under our memo, the mayor and my memo regarding item number one, it's really to have you, John, take a look at putting together, what, what other, what things should we be doing at the park? Not necessarily saying we need to do these, just prioritize, take a look at getting rid of the parking on, on the side of the park. Can we expand the park? Should we build? Should we build a permanent structure of a stage? And should we bear the cost? Should Breeze of Innovation or Urban Confluence bear the cost? Is there some... The conservancy, does the conservancy bear the cost? Those are all things that I think need to be explored, and that's why that's in the memo, is it gives you marching orders, if you will, to explore those things that could benefit and heighten the use and experience of the park. And before I yield my time, which has expired, I see that, I just want to emphasize a couple of things that you mentioned, John, and I wanted to make sure that the members of the public and the audience heard, is that the funding for Breeze of Innovation is a private funding project. The city is not bearing any expense. Can you address how that relates to staff time and staff costs?
Sure. Thanks, Councilmember. So already previously, Urban Confluence has deposited funds with the city, so when our staff is working on this, they have a charge account. That'll increase, you know, if we move towards master plans and things like that, that involves PBC at a much deeper level, the EIRs or the SEQUAs, all those good things take a lot of effort. I'm sure, though, that Urban Confluence will have a consultant helping manage this or other professionals that they'll be paying, but it's a reimbursement model where they deposit and we charge against. And then we would be working through that budget, so let's just say the scenario today is, go do the outreach and come back and tell us all about that. You know, we would attempt to then start answering some of these other questions, for example, the long, "How do you operate it, right? How do you pay for operations?" Which is, it's conversations we've already had, but there's clearly, there's questions in the public about how those things happen, and we would be able to explain that through the outreach. So, yes, they are paying, and we would expect them to continue to pay unless the council directed otherwise.
Another point of clarification is that Breeze has always been intended to be a gift that we are going to pay for, and that's been from the very beginning. And then we ended up working hand-in-hand with the Chavez family, both Chavez Family Vision and the Cesar Chavez Foundation, so we added into our scope elements that honor Cesar Chavez, which aren't designed yet. So I want to remind all of you, there is no park design. There isn't even a Breeze of Innovation design. It's just, all of these things are ideas. So our intention is to pay for these elements that honor Cesar Chavez and for Breeze of Innovation, but all of these other improvements, we are not agreeing to fund. We are agreeing to work with other stakeholders, hopefully some kind of a governance organization for the park, and developing master plans and things, but those are all outside of the scope of Breeze, Councilmember Foley. I hope that's clear. But we intend to work hand-in-hand with all of those people to both raise money and execute that, because we think these things should happen together, not one at a time, that ultimately there's no way we could build Breeze at the park without going through a park master plan, et cetera. We have to be consistent with all the other stakeholders who care about the park.
Steve, thank you for that clarification regarding the funding, and I appreciate that you're not giving us a blank check to do whatever we want to enhance the park. It's the city park. Yours is the Breeze of Innovation, and I look forward to my colleagues voting to move this forward.
If I did have a blank check, I would give it to you.
Okay, thanks, Councilmember. Thank you elucidated a number of important points. Just before we continue with the conversation, just on the group memo from Torres, Jimenez, Cohen, and Candelaus, I want to ask just a couple of kind of tactical questions, just as we may want to modify the motion, and just to be clear, motion was from Councilwoman Foley, seconded by Councilwoman Davis, and included both group memos. So just on the park master plan, I think I heard from John a preference to go out and gather feedback from all the different stakeholders prior to engaging in a master plan, and I don't know, John, if this is accurate or not, but I suspect one possibility could be that we end up tapping a private funder to help pay for a master plan at some point. Is that possible? That could be an outcome if we took your preferred approach.
Yeah. In Council District III, where this project would be, all the funding they have is really tied up towards St. James, which also has a master plan and a $65 million price tag, of which we only have $10 million.
Yeah.
So I don't know that there's going to be available funding from the city. It'd have to be outside.
Yeah. Okay, so on Rec. A, appreciate the spirit of it. We might want to entertain a... I'd certainly support a modification to better align with the approach John's suggesting for reasons noted. On B, I think the spirit makes perfect sense. I would just note, however, may not be the city doing this, maybe something that's incorporated through the work of Breeze of Innovation, depending on what they come back with, if the council is supportive of that. And then finally, on C, again, just tactical question. John, do we actually need a traffic study specifically to do that? Will that make sense? I know we now have a... The downtown transportation plan, and I'm just curious how those intersect. The more that we can reduce costs and staff burden, the better, as long as we're engaging with stakeholders and have enough data to make good decisions.
Right. So, thank you. I talked with Director of Transportation, John Risto, today actually about this. His leaning is that it probably would require a traffic study. We were hoping it would not. That's not a definitive answer yet, because we'll have to dig into that a little bit more, but it is... He did remind me, that is Market Street.
Sure.
So, you know, we have to think carefully.
Yeah.
And, you know, if this were wildly successful, we'd probably want that lane back.
We might.
Here's the problem, though. That lane is probably needed in order to make the project work ultimately. I don't know that the footprint of the park is wide enough, and so... And there are limitations in terms of park size. So, for example, if we were to contract with a conservancy to run this project, right, run the building, you know, if there were tickets for whatever, and in order to contract with a group long-term in a city park, it needs to be over five acres, and this park is not quite at five acres. So the footprint needs to be widened to accommodate the project, but it also needs to be widened to even allow for us to have the flexibility to enter a long-term agreement with a different operator other than the city.
Okay. Okay, great. I may have a few other questions. I just wanted to tactically get into those recs before we move any farther, because my colleagues may want to modify the motion slightly, but that's helpful to understand on C.
Mayor, if I could...
Yeah, go ahead, Angel.
You know, I think John raises a very important part, a very important point. You know, if we jump right into a master plan, you talk about something that'll really kind of bog this process down. It would definitely be the master plan.
Yep.
Traffic study will further exacerbate that. One way to do this is to chunk this down, kind of back to kind of Steve's point, is to just go forward with the staff, with John's memo, to explore the site as step one, and take recommendation number three from your and Councilmember Foley's memo, recommendation around making sure that Sounds the Light Tower, you know, is responsible for the funds, and then consider all the other recommendations in their community outreach, whatever is something that they can include in that outreach as they're exploring this site. All these issues are going to come up in that exploration process, and that'll at least can potentially inform a more formal master plan if, in fact, it pans out that this would be a good site. That initial conversation may find that, "Well, it's a great site," or it may find, "No, this is a real bad site." And so, you know, in the spirit of management expectations and also in the spirit of action, perhaps chunking it down that way, you know, just giving the green light to explore, make sure that they're on the hook for the funding, and then defer everything else as consideration as part of that exploration process through community outreach.
Yeah, yeah. Makes sense. And that's primarily modifying this concept to going to a master plan. I will note that the recs one and two in our memo uses the verb "explore," and I think that's fairly flexible.
That's correct.
We might want to strike the word "implementing" for now, just until we hear back from you all, if that's helpful, just from the memo from Councilwoman Foley and myself. But again, I'm not the maker of the motion. I just wanted to highlight a few of the more tactical pieces here. Let me... Why don't we continue the conversation? Thank you all for your patience. Let's go to... Let me go to Councilman Jimenez.
So would the memo, the motion that's in front of us then, by Councilmember Foley, is both, so we need to sort of disaggregate some of this, given all the comments. I guess I'm wondering, just in a practical sense, John, when do you think we would hit that threshold in which you think a master plan would be needed?
Well, I would hope that it would be at the very next meeting, when we came back and hopefully had the positive sort of vision connected now, and stakeholders on board, and some positive outlook, and say, "Okay, we feel like we've got a project that the community is going to support," and then would ask for permission to move forward on a master plan.
Okay, all right. So my... I wanted to make sure, that's sort of what I understood. I wanted to make sure I understood, because you weren't saying it wasn't necessary. You just don't think it's necessary now.
Oh, no. Right.
At this moment.
Yes. It's a next step. I don't think it's... I'm not recommending it be this next step.
Right, right. Okay, all right. And then, so obviously, Steve and his group are going to go out and continue the work, which I'm supportive of, very appreciate his inclusive nature, really trying to bring in all the different stakeholders, Steve. But if it's determined, like, this is a good site, we do want to move forward and continue and see how it actually would take shape, then that would then, you know, flip that switch, if you will, to then go, "Okay, master plan."
Correct.
All right. Okay. And so, let me just... I'm looking at some of this.
Councilmember Jimenez, may I add something?
Please, sir.
A really important point for you all to remember is that there were references made earlier to Breeze of Innovation being far too big and out of scale for the park, et cetera, et cetera. There is no scale. I just want to remind the public, the people here, and also all of you, there is no scale. It's an idea. We did some visualizations that caused people confusion. The first iteration of Breeze of Innovation had 500 rods. The second iteration had 1,000 rods when they were trying to win a competition. It's going to be far, far smaller at Plaza de Cesar Chavez, and what I will tell you is when we had the design team here in San Jose from all over the world, the first point they all made is that it had to be much, much smaller. As you all know, architects and designers and artists are all about scale. Scale is what makes art work. Bad scale doesn't work. Good scale does work. So I want to just say to all of you, while I can look you straight in the eyes, that there is no scale yet. This will be done properly and appropriately for the site in conjunction with all the other elements of the park, and that's why ultimately a master plan will be necessary in order for us to do what's responsible and then what you would support.
Okay, all right. So given A, in the memo signed on by colleagues and I, I'm open to taking that out in recognition that there's going to be a future conversation if and when we're going to move forward with Breeze Innovation at this site. And so I'll...
I will accept that as a friendly amendment.
And then B, recommend options to honor Cesar Chavez. I think, I mean, that's sort of built into what Steve has already said, time and again, I believe, and quite frankly, I think the council will probably hold you to that. I think I don't want to do anything that... The only thing I want to do as it relates to Cesar Chavez is enhance or broaden his legacy as it relates to this park. And so anything short of that, I wouldn't be supportive of it, and so I think you know that in all the conversations you've had. So I think that's already built in. So we can... We can leave B in there. John, do you... I mean, is that...
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I think that's completely the intent.
Right, okay. All right.
Maybe we just make it "explore" versus "recommend." Maybe we wait to see what Breeze of Innovation comes back with versus a staff recommendation, if that's...
I'm okay with "explore."
Well, I think she...
Okay, great.
Yeah. It's semantics, but yeah. So conduct traffic study. John, you were talking about conducting traffic study. You talked to John and DOT, and I assume some of that would obviously be necessary.
Yeah.
But it has... It might create other issues, right? But you also acknowledge that we would potentially need to expand that in order to expand the sort of the footprint of the park to allow for any new sort of development, even if... And I suspect that probably applies even if Breeze of Innovation didn't come and we sought to expand the stage and do other things, it would probably be necessary.
It would. I mean, the advantage to Arena Green is it's bigger than five acres, so we wouldn't have had to deal with that issue, but at this site, that's just the unfortunate reality.
A reminder, too, last October, DOT issued a study that actually specifically recommended for making the street smaller and the park bigger. So this didn't come from us or from PRNS, it came from DOT.
So would the appropriate language for C, John, be just "explore" traffic studies or "conduct" traffic studies? I assume at some point that's going to be absolutely necessary. I'm not sure if it's...
Yeah, I mean, for me, the kind of language is "explore the need for," right?
Okay.
Do we need it or not? And then we can come back with you with that answer definitively. I just don't have it today, unfortunately.
All right. Well, given the shifting of some of the language, I'm okay with it. I think it still honors the spirit of the memo, and I had gone back and forth as to whether we were too prescriptive. I know this is, we're at the start of the process, and I think all of us are going to be paying close attention, so I feel comfortable sort of with the adjustments.
Are you asking for a friendly amendment?
I'll ask for those friendly amendments as we were discussing, yes.
I will accept "explore" the need for traffic studies.
Thank you.
The secondor's okay with that? Great. Speaking of which, Councilmember Davis, you're up.
Thank you. I seconded the motion, so obviously I'm happy to study this site. I think it is a more appropriate site. You are going to need yet another new name for your group, since it won't be at the Confluence anymore, but... Or maybe won't be at the Confluence, but I think it's a more appropriate site, and I know my colleagues share that thought as well. And I just want to say that I love the idea of Breeze of Innovation. I support it and have supported it from the beginning. I really think it's our opportunity to put San Jose on the map. It bothers me very much, and Steve knows this, because I say this to him every time we have a meeting, that when we have big events in San Jose, like events that are literally all in San Jose, like the U.S. Figure Skating Championships, they still, on TV, they still show the Golden Gate Bridge. That is nowhere near here. We absolutely need a landmark, and having a true landmark in our own city will help raise the visibility of San Jose, and I think that's really important. I do have a question about the conservancy. We already have the Guadalupe River Park Conservancy, and I understand wanting to have a separate conservancy. I also think that the Levitt folks that are working on St. James Park and wanting to do a Levitt Pavilion are probably going to want or need a conservancy as well. And I do have a question, John, for you about how having three conservancies all in the downtown area for different parks would work for parks, and how that would be maybe structured? Would it be something similar to where the Library Foundation has Friends of Individual Libraries, and there would be an overarching group? I just have a concern about, not just for parks, and how it would be administered, but also about cannibalizing donors.
Yeah, thank you for the question, and I agree, you know, those three specific, well, conservancies, nonprofits, that you're addressing are all kind of competing in the same space, for sure. In the ideal world, a conservancy can actually take the burden off of the government and be able to raise the money through whatever means to operate the amenity or park, let's say Levitt Pavilion or the Breeze of Innovation, and that ideally frees up the regular funding to do other things in the city parks outside of those areas. In the worst scenarios, they don't work at all. So it's hard for me to predict the future, but, you know, it's interesting, we actually went round and round in this conversation as well with Google, because I believe we're developing, I think it's four parks as a part of that project, and they wanted to manage them all with a conservancy. And in that situation, we actually put that conversation off to the future, because we were thinking, "We don't need to figure out a conservancy right now, this is 10 years away." And I would say the same here. I don't know that we have to have the answer yet. This conservancy, the Plaza Conservancy, I believe we're calling it, just formed like last week. So I think they're still forming. I don't even know that it's coalesced, frankly. So, you know, it'll take more conversations and understanding about what their capacity might be, and whether that capacity, for example, would only be Breeze of Innovation or extend to the entire footprint of the park, right?
Yeah.
So they can be great, and they can't be, and unfortunately, I can't predict yet where something like this would go.
And do you have a sense of how, I guess, even possibly four conservancies all in the downtown would work together, or would there be no relationship among the different conservancies?
Yeah, another great question. You know, none of them are working together now, although many of them know each other. I mean, I know Steve has met with the San Jose Levitt folks and talked about trying to collaborate. It didn't work out that well, but they're aware of each other. Some of them have known each other for years. Obviously, he knows the Guadalupe River Park Conservancy, because we're going to be in their park chain. But there you have an example. We're actually doing a lot of the maintenance in that park chain still.
Yeah.
So that conservancy hasn't yet got to that point. You know, you always put Central Park in New York and Bryant Park, these wonderful, awesome examples of how a conservancy can work. So yeah, if they can work that way, I'd love to see four of them or more, you know? It'd be fantastic, because, as you know, we are not budgeted to take care of the parks to the standard that we wish to, and we're not budgeted to build as many new parks or or renovate parks to the standard that we'd like to. So to the degree that they can be helpful, we would very much encourage it.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Steve, go ahead.
Councilmember Davis, thank you for the question. One of the real advantages of the conservancies in many of the most successful parks in America are run by conservancies, but the public doesn't know it. They just know they have these fantastic parks. These parks are raising private money to improve public parks, and they typically are a single park. And the reason is that the singular focus on that park is one of the advantages of a conservancy, that you've got a board and you've got donors who specifically care about that park, as opposed to combining a bunch of parks in a geographic area. New York has about 20 park conservancies. If, you know, we've all been to New York. I didn't know there were any conservancies in New York a year ago. I thought they were just PRNS parks, and they had somebody like John running all of them. So oftentimes, these conservancy models end up liberating public money to go to other parks, because the private money ends up replacing public money. And on top of that, you get economic development very commonly in these parks that ends up bringing more money to the general fund. So rather than sucking money from the general fund, these parks end up being a massive net positive to, to the general fund. And one of the real points about why would people donate to conservancies and why not, why don't they just donate money to cities? Most taxpayers think they've already donated to the city, and so they're excited to give focused donations, Councilmember Davis. For example, someone might love Levitt Pavilion and hate Plaza de Cesar Chavez, et cetera. So that's one of the reasons why. There's a lot of logic to having park-specific conservancies managing, managing parks. So whatever entity you, you might decide on, there's a lot of benefit to having a third party instead of having, you know, John and his team trying to kind of squeeze blood out of a turnip these days where we don't have enough money or staff to do these new initiatives. So there's a lot of argument across America for having third parties manage parks.
Oh, I completely agree. I just think we, with GRPC, I think Jason would be the first to tell you that we, he doesn't have a lot of people excited to donate to that conservancy. We, we have had success with the Rotary Play Garden and with individual donors for capital projects for, for the Rotary Play Garden and Phase Two and having add-ons to that. But, but we are still, as John pointed out, still using public dollars for the vast majority of Guadalupe River Park and Trails. So I, I appreciate the aspiration, and I appreciate that, that all the investment of the 20 conservancies in New York City. We just have an example here in our own city where we have one conservancy that's, that struggles to fundraise. And, and I know there's all, you know, and they have a great board. So I just want to express my concern about adding new conservancies when we don't have a plethora of dollars invested in our, in our Parks Foundation, which already exists, and in our conservancy that, that already exists. So I'm just going to put that out there. I'm not, you know, you guys can create a conservancy and, and the parks, and negotiate an agreement with, with parks, as you will, but I, I would caution you against doing that without having a substantial endowment in place before you get to that point.
And I certainly never wanted to minimize the difficulty of raising lots of money, regardless of what kind of entity it is, councilmembers, so that...
Understood.
Understand. And also, our, our board of our organization hasn't joined the conservancy yet, and they, in our board meeting yesterday, didn't feel like they had enough information. So while in theory we're totally supportive, this is going to be an incremental process like you were describing.
Great. Thank you.
If I can add, you know, ideally, it would, it would be an operator that would help do this versus city staff. But, but the mere fact that a conservancy has now formed with an interest in doing this doesn't necessarily mean the city will contract with them. It would still go through a normal process where you do a procurement and you ask for the public to bid. And through that process, we would have to engage the city council. We would talk about, well, what terms does the city want for this? And what are our expectations of the conservancy? So we would have that opportunity to find those roles and, and responsibilities as we got closer to it.
Thank you, John. I appreciate that clarification. That's it for me.
Great. Great questions, and I was hoping to go there as well if Councilmember Davis didn't. I think there's obviously great potential to the sort of adopt a park, adopt a library concept, if there's a lot of passion, but obviously has to have a certain level of critical mass and commitment. I also want to just reiterate, I think, Councilmember Davis's point about having a visual landmark, an icon that the city becomes associated with, is, is a very powerful idea and one that I certainly support. Let's go to, we've got a couple of hands still up. We'll go to Councilmember Cohen next.
Thank you. I do, I do share Councilmember Davis's frustration when I see the Golden Gate Bridge every time there's an event in San Jose. It occurred to me while watching the Warriors yesterday, and they were showing Sacramento, that in reality Sacramento is basically the same distance from San Francisco. Why aren't they showing the Golden Gate Bridge for Sacramento when they show it for San Jose? It's not clear to me. Of course, you know, the Golden Gate Bridge will always be the draw that everyone will show, so, you know, hopefully we can get, get something. When we talk about a conservancy, you know, the unfortunate truth is that at this point there's not as much, there's not as many people taking pride in downtown and really wanting to contribute to these conservancies, and I hope we can change that. I'm hoping that with our vibrancy efforts, that with the growth of downtown, that that, that can make a difference, and we can start to compete with other cities in that regard and, and really build up these parks. And I hope a conservancy for, for downtown, for, for the park, Chavez Park, will be broader than a Breeze of Innovation conservancy, but a, but a park-wide conservancy, because I think the park is really important as a, as an entire piece. But I want to thank you, Steve, and the, the board of Urban Confluence. And by the way, Urban Confluence still works. It's an urban confluence of where people come together in the city. So anyway, but, but I appreciate your, your efforts to try to, to bring something to the city that, you know, might be iconic or might just be a focal point for our downtown. I just wanted to say, the reason why I signed on to the memo with, had some of those details in it, and I appreciate the amendments we've been making, was that an outreach process that was focused on Breeze of Innovation alone, I don't believe will be productive. If people are thinking about that project by itself and where it should be, that's a different question than how does it fit in with whatever future amenities we want in a park? So to me, the outreach has to be, and I appreciate what Angel was saying about this, the outreach has to include that conversation about what do you want in this park, and can this be part of that? Is this, is this a top, a cap for a new stage or for, or is this somewhere else in the park? And where are the, overall the things we want in this park? Because people are not going to be able to visualize that Breeze of Innovation fits unless they know what else they're getting out of the park. So that's kind of the reason, I think, the spirit behind that, that, you know, the memo. I, I do appreciate this question of whether a master plan is the right thing. I think the, the vision really of, maybe I'll speak for myself, but maybe the co-authors as well, was that holistic view has to be taken as we move right now, because we're not going to get the right answer without the holistic view. And whether we call it a master plan or preparing for a master plan or an outreach process, to me, that's really the point. And I, but I do appreciate, I think we need to have a conversation with the council, the city, and PRNS about what master plans really mean. John knows very well that we have two big master plans, or we have one and another one coming in North San Jose for two huge parks. We have an Alviso master plan that's 20 years old that I think gave people a false sense of what is coming to their park. So once you write and draw a master plan, if the master plan is this idea that here's what's possible if there were unlimited funding, that's a different question than here's what we're going to do. So I think we ought to really think about what a master plan means, because I think we've learned from the Alviso master plan, the mistake of drawing out 20, $30 million worth of amenities that we can never fund. So we just need to be thoughtful as we figure out what master plan means in this case. I think, I think a master plan should be, here's what we can afford to do, how it will be funded, and here's a plan to do it. And so I hope that when we do Agnews Park in North San Jose, and when we do this park here, that we're thinking about a master plan that's realistic. And that, I think, that's, I think, where we've gotten off track and why maybe there's this miscommunication about what our intent was behind a master plan. I think, thinking about what's possible at this park is really the spirit of what we were asking for, so I appreciate that. And I know this is early, I just want to bring this up because I love talking about trees. I was walking through the park just the other day, noticed just in parts of the park, there are huge, great, mature trees. And I was just thinking about our memo and saying, I really don't want a master plan that says, we got to clear out all these trees and, and start from scratch. I hope we'll be thoughtful about some of the things we have and what we want to keep in addition to what we want to change. So those are all my comments.
Yeah, great. Great points all around. Thank you, Councilmember. And Councilmember Batra.
I think having a iconic structure or a focal point, which my colleague, Councilmember David Cohen said, I think it's not a debatable item whether we want one, whether we need one. I think it's a given that a city, the 10th largest city in the, in the country, should have something like that. And I think in terms of the discussion which was just going on, is it a master plan? Is it something else? In order to have increased possibility of a success, that there will be actually a Breeze Innovation in the park, you have to study a little bit more than at least the Breeze Innovation. Because it has, if you come in and say that, hey, it is feasible to do it, obvious question is going to be, it's feasible to, yes, build the structure. What's going to be around it? Is that going to fit with it or not? Okay? So whatever that means, being able to answer that question, is really the scope of your feasibility study, the answers from there. Because if it is strictly, will the structure be possible to build? That's not the complete answer, right? So, so to that extent, the feasibility study, call it a master plan, not a master plan, I'm okay with that. But will your feasibility scope be enough to be able to answer the question to the community that how does this structure fit in with, in this park, whatever the park is going to be, bigger or smaller?
Well, Councilmember, I, I think the purpose of this outreach really is to nail down some of these things and be able to come back to council and say, well, when we talk to the community, here's, here's what we coalesced around, or here's what we wanted, and here's what may be feasible, and here's what may not be feasible out of all those things. It's not necessarily us just coming back and saying, here's everything everybody wanted, we're just going to pile it all in there in the park, because that's, that's probably not realistic at all.
No.
So we understand that, but I also understand the reality, which is there's a lot of stakeholders around this space, and there's a lot of things they're going to want. And so, you know, there are ways to sort of work with that. You know, Councilmember Cohen has had, had to go through some tough meetings this year because of that Alviso master plan that's been sitting on shelves so long. So we are very sensitive to that idea. One of the things we've talked about is designing master plans where you say, you basically have a basic layer, a, a first phase, where you say, this is what we can afford, and, and everything else other than that is noted for the record, and if we get money, we'd be happy to add them, but we're really only going to do this basic piece of it, so that the community doesn't then think they're going to get everything that got thrown into the master plan. So that's our approach.
You know, that, that's perfect, because you don't want to overpromise and underdeliver. You'd rather do the other way around, okay? So as long as your feasibility study, when you bring it back, is going to have that kind of a scope, that's perfect. Label it whatever you want to, okay? The second one I received, and I think many of us have received, letters from the supporters of these, but they warned us about a second item, which is, please think about the long-term financing of this thing, okay? Because they've given examples, and I think all of us have their letters, where something started with a lot of enthusiasm, over time, it just became a ruin, okay? And you obviously don't want to see that happen in our lifetime, okay? So in your feasibility study, and as you're figuring out the governance, the conservancy and all that, please do think about that and give the assurance to the people that we have thought about it, and we know that we can raise the funds which will be needed to build it and to operate and maintain it for some length of time, so that the people feel excited about doing this thing, because they, they're not fearful that few years down the road, this thing's structure is going to become difficult for them or an eyesore, okay?
From the first, Councilmember Batra, from the first time we've, were approved by council, and this would be the fourth time if we're successful today, it's always been clear that some kind of combination of earned income and endowment and ongoing fundraising will be necessary before you, as council, will even accept the gift. So what you're saying is completely correct.
Yeah. So I'm just sharing with you what I have heard in the short time around the people, and I'm glad that you have already given thought to it, and that's how you're proceeding. So it's going to be easy acceptance by the community of that answer, okay? And the third point, which has been, I think, indirectly made, is that the Levitt Pavilion, which is already an approved and going, and probably some of the donors are same, at the same place, so you are going to be as cautious about it to see that the, really the donors are willing to put out that much money, because they have made commitments to the Levitt Pavilion, and this one also, they will be able to share whatever the wealth they have, okay? And that's the other word of warning or reminder people have given us, please make sure that that point is understood and proper plans are in place, that you're raising fundraising while a major fundraising is going on, on the Levitt Pavilion, okay? So whatever your methods are going to be. So I'll be supporting the, the motion to proceed forward and look forward to seeing the report come back. Hopefully, it is a resounding yes, okay? So would like to see that. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember. Steve, just want to thank you again for your tireless efforts here. I know it's, it's a public-spirited vision, you're really thinking about the common good of our city. I think there's a lot of potential here, and I'm happy to support the motion on the floor. Appreciate all the comments and, and good questions and points my colleagues made. Let's vote. Great. Thanks, Tony. We are on to open forum, which is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on any city-related business that was not on today's agenda.
Marta?
Hello. My name is Martha Rodriguez. Come here, Charlie. Charlie, come here. Come here. Come here. I, well, good afternoon, board members. I'm here because I have not gotten any resolution on my case. I've called the council members, Sylvia something, I don't know, District Eight, and I haven't heard anything back. I've contacted Andy Ngo, my activist, that I was staying at a shelter, that they refused to help me, and they disfigured me. And I was standing right outside the door. There was the lead supervisor, the two staff members and security, and I had asked them for help, and they said they couldn't do anything for me, and if I lifted up my hands, I would be evicted. I would be exited out of the shelter. But see, nobody told me that I was going to be the example of a filthy condition that they lived by. They had to step over feces. I stepped over a meth pipe. I'm not a druggie. But now I'm, I'm ashamed of what, to show my face to anybody, because the first thing that they look at is my teeth is gone. But I went in there with full teeth. I don't have a drug problem. They stole my dog with staff members. I have cancer, I got no cure. They asked me, do you take any pills? I said, no, I don't take no pills. I do a lot of exercises, I can get tired, so I don't feel my body on fire. And I drink, I have a cup of coffee, so I can go to sleep. Those are my drugs. But other than that, I don't feel I should have to go through all this, or my dog that they kidnapped. So I, I don't know what to do. I just need to know, why haven't I gotten my justice? I didn't ask for all this.
You know, if I could just interject, thank, thank you for being here, and I'm sorry to hear about your challenges. I'll just make two comments, and then we're going to have to continue with public comment. If you are in District Eight, we have your new council member, Councilmember Candelas here, and we also have Stephen Ngo on my team, who I'm sure would be very happy to follow up with you and, and get a little more information and see if there's something we can do to help you.
Yeah, because I'm just...
We can't, we can't really get into a back and forth here. We're in public, I have to let other members of the public have their opportunity to speak, but my staff, and I'm sure Councilmember Candelas's staff, would be very happy to try to support you with...
Candelas's staff, would be very happy to try to support you with any next steps.
Yeah, because I don't know what to do, because I'm getting shuffled down to other shelters, and still being abused, you know? I'm not here to abuse the system, or anything. I came in with no clothes, because they took them away from me. They took her leashes, they took her food, they took everything, they took everything from me.
Yeah.
So I came in here with three pairs of clothes. When I've asked this villa for some sets of clothes, and they keep saying, no, you know, maybe later, maybe later. I said, you know what, I'm tired, I have a lot of pride, and I have, you know, I'm tired of asking and begging.
Yeah.
So I just need to deal with this, and move on, because I do have my justice, I'm a US citizen.
Okay, and ma'am, again, I appreciate being here, and I know you waited a long time to speak, and so we don't usually go back and forth here at this moment, but we've got a couple of staff members here who can connect with you, and we're going to see what we might be able to do to help, and leave if you want...
Kip, can you introduce her to Teddy, so that we can get her contact information? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Tony, do we have anybody else in person?
Not in person.
Okay.
I have caller 1367, followed by Carmen.
This is Lillian from District Three, and I'm calling about the senior commission. We have two or three individuals that have applied at the senior commission, to be on the senior commission. It feels like the city council is slightly stalling in getting those individuals on there. We cannot have a quorum, because we don't have those individuals on the senior commission yet. There's been nobody from city council who said, yes, you can fill that role, you fill out the application, and you were appointed to the senior commission. I know that you're refocusing a little bit on how commissions are working, such as the neighborhood commission and other commissions, on structure, et cetera, et cetera, but we are ready to go. We would like to have a quorum by May, and we are engaged in our community, everybody sitting on that commission is just waiting to have those seats filled. So if you could please stop stalling, and put those people in those particular seats, we would really appreciate it. Our quorum is ready, hopefully by May, and then we can get on to business. Thank you so much.
Blair, oh, sorry, Carmen, followed by Blair. Carmen? Carmen, I'll move on to Blair.
Hi, Blair Beekman here, thanks a lot for the meeting today. It was my intention to really make clear that it's VTA light rail drivers that have a real morale that we have to rally around and help build, and how to talk about the future of the airport project. Good luck in those efforts by ourselves. For this meeting today, I'll talk more about issues and its items that rules in open government tomorrow. I feel that, overall, a real good luck to ourselves to address the SJPOA issue, to continue our efforts to make it a community process. I've noticed that this has had some sort of federal relationship to it, federal investigation has probably possibly started, it was the beginning of this, and they were doing the same, federal agencies were possibly doing the same investigative work in Antioch, in the Antioch police area, that they were monitoring their police, and noticing really bad practices by them, that are now coming to light, and becoming a full community process that's being talked about openly, in their council chambers, and in their, you know, meetings. We're not doing that here in San Jose yet, I hope we can, I hope we can develop the tools as a community process, to really talk about these issues, and not be afraid to. I know how much you guys want to support the police, you have to look at the downside of this as well, and how they actually do hurt communities sometimes. And we have to have honest conversations about that, and you guys can't be afraid to have those conversations, and that's, it's that honesty that is what is positive sustainability, and how we build our future well. Good luck in those caring efforts, we all want to build, you know, a good future, and it's good oversight, it's community participation. That's our good stuff, good luck how we can learn how to really do that.
Carmen, let's try again.
Great, thank you, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, fabulous. So my name is Carmen Brammer, I'm a former candidate for the District Eight City Council vacant seat, and I'm a member of the indivisible San Jose. I'm here to share an opportunity for San Jose to obtain funds related to solar access. The Solar Access Act, SB 375, requires cities to streamline their solar permit process, making it easier for residents to go solar. We recommend San Jose, we commend San Jose for leading the way in streamlined permitting for solar panels, but the city lacks a permitting process for streamlining solar storage. May 1st is the deadline for submitting the application to receive $100,000. San Jose has less than three weeks to complete and submit the application, which takes about 15 minutes. If we don't apply for the grant, San Jose stands to lose $100,000 that would help us comply with the new law. So we at ISJ is asking the city council and the mayor to apply for the grant, to ease the process for residents to get solar batteries before the looming May 1st deadline. Members of our team have contacted your offices, but we've not received any responses, and we are ready to work with all of you on the submission of the paperwork. Thank you.
Back to council.
Thank you, have a great night, everyone, we're adjourned.